Okay, it is 5:45, so I will call to order the January 7th, 2021, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the pledge of allegiance. You'll rise, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, God, liberty and justice for all.
We start with about 15 minutes of public comment time. This evening, we have at least six people that wish to speak. So I'm requesting that those speaking limit their remarks to about two minutes each, so we can get everybody in in time. First person is here with us, Crystal Colley. We'll take a little extra time and see if you come in from the overflow room. And if you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Crystal Colley. And my address is 527, 500 West, here in Hendersonville. Do I keep my mask on?
I think it's fine while you're speaking.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to the city of Hendersonville for taking the initiative, especially last year with communicating with myself, as well as my team, which includes Indion Jackson, as well as Josh Williams, about concerns that we've had, especially with the African American community here in Hendersonville. And so I am very appreciative of what you had done for us last year. And I would like to continue for us to communicate the way that we had been doing. We had to communicate, as you know, via email and Zoom meetings. And one of my first letters to you was on June 22nd, I believe, and it was due to the signage for the Green Meadows community. And I had explained, of course, that the Green Meadows community is a very beautiful community. It's a part of our city. The signage for Green Meadows community is really bad. It's weathered. It needs to be changed. And of course, through the meetings that we had, we discussed how we could make that happen. And I haven't heard much back. You know, it's been a while. I know things have happened. But if we could just put up a temporary sign for the Green Meadows community. It's important to even point out, yes, the sign is bad, but all you can see is green meadows. You can't even read the word "community" that's a part of the sign. I think that's very important. Also, my last statement that I'm making is I am in support for the People's Museum that's on the proposal tonight for you guys to listen to. This museum, of course, is very important for our children here in Henderson County, for those that attend our schools, as well as those who attend homeschool. They can really receive a great education about the history of Henderson County, dealing with all cultures. And I'm highly in support of this. I'm a mother to a 12-year-old who attends Hendersonville Middle School. And as some of you may know, I definitely have had a lot of success with a project that I took upon myself to talk about the beautiful African American history of Henderson County through artwork, art exhibits, and also having the chance to go to two of our schools here to talk to children about the history of this area. And with this museum, the People's Museum, it can definitely help be a great resource for our children and also the other cultures here, the people that's here, the stories that can be told, that should be told. I feel our children should learn about the history of Henderson County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, Mr. Khan, do we have any update on the sign? Or is it just sort of been a...
So I think the idea of the sign is we were working on it as part of the Seventh Avenue project, and we got into some design and really trying to find the right location. It's still on our priority to get it done. Things just got slowed down as we were doing the design of the project.
Okay, thank you. So it is in process?
Yes.
All right. Next, Rafael Morales. If you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Yeah, Rafael Morales, Hendersonville.
Could try to limit your time to two minutes. We would appreciate that.
Sure, absolutely. So glad to have the opportunity to speak. And I think that this meeting, like a lot of meetings around the country, are most likely foreshadowed by the tragic events that happened last night in our nation's capital. And I wanted to take a minute to reach out to our local officials for comment. Violence begets violence, and it's a hard lesson that unfortunately too often we're too late to understand. James Baldwin once famously said that we can disagree and we can still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial to my humanity and my right to exist. What happened in the Capitol yesterday was not in the abstract. Folks from our own quiet, humble mountain home, from our community, saved gas money, they carpool, they bought bus tickets, they purchased plane tickets, and they traveled to our nation's capital to participate in insurrection. All because of the language and actions used and espoused by the man that holds the highest office in the land. A man supported for years by sitting members of this council and many councils in many spaces across this country. I could sit here and talk about how we can still love each other, and we can disagree, and we can smile about it, and we can move along. We can pretend. I think we can all sit around the table at the holidays and pretend to be okay about certain disagreements. But this disagreement is a fundamental disappointment and outright betrayal of our most sacred American institutions. So we cannot move forward like this, as business as usual, because we know that the domestic terrorists, the insurrectionists, are our neighbors, and their actions are supported and emboldened by the violent silence of their mentor, their leader. Be it a Facebook algorithm, a YouTube algorithm, Instagram, or Snapchat algorithm, or a flesh and blood man tweeting with his thumbs. The designs of these many that marched on our nation's capital and committed this act of sedition were drawn on their phones, their laptops, their tablets, and their ears as they listened to recommended video streams and so on while they worked. Normal, blue-collar, blue-blooded Americans as they worked in our communities. And the very systems that led to their actions last night are the very systems that some of you sitting here today have in ink forever supported. So I just came here to be frank. I came here to ask all of the sitting council members representing the people of Hendersonville, North Carolina, if they would take this moment to renounce their support of the sitting 45th President of the United States, Donald John Trump, amidst our officials' consideration of invoking the 25th Amendment to remove him from office. Will you publicly here and now rescind any support you have ever given to his position of power and withdraw any support moving forward? And I ask this again not to be sensational, or to polarize, or further divide us, but to begin the process of healing us in our homes and our communities across this country. This man's actions and language has inspired our own community members to act with haste against our institutions.
Okay, can you wind up your well beyond the two minutes?
Okay. This makes our language very real threat to very real home. None of this language exists in the abstract any longer. What will you do? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill, I think it's Pollock. You could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Well, 202 Saddle Club Lane, Hendersonville. I did not hear the instructions on that. Awful, I'm speaking.
If...
It's okay?
You can...
My understanding is from the minutes in the newspaper that you find folks are considering something called diversity. Warren Buffett, head of Berkshire Hathaway, says this about diversity. Berkshire does not have a policy for the consideration of diversity and identifying nominees for the director. Instead, we look for individuals with very high integrity, business savvy, an owner-oriented attitude, and a deep, genuine interest in the company. Change company and make it the city of Hendersonville. That's not a bad driving statement for you folks. He further added emphasis in the 2020 proxy where five directors were nominated. And he says, "All five of the directors just described possessed four qualities. We speak, and I just, we seek, and I just spoke. Each was selected without regard to gender, without regard to race, without regard to ethnicity. For anyone to suggest otherwise would be wrong and demeaning." Demeaning. Honey, I just got a job at the city of Hendersonville. They gave it to me because of the color of my skin. Gather around, kids. I want to tell you how I like this. I think we could do better. There was a gentleman of some moderate notoriety a few years ago that spoke on this. And he said, "I lust for, I want, I dream of the day my children will be judged by their character and not the color of their skin." Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Sarah Cosgrove. You could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Hi, it's Sarah Cosgrove, 203 Davis Mountain Road, Laurel Park, 28739. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you all for your commitment to the city of Hendersonville and its people. I come to you today as a business owner, taxpayer, property owner, ally, and most importantly, a mother of four kids. I remember when I was growing up, just outside Atlanta, coming up here to this little city in the hills full of uniqueness and charm. That charm definitely contributed to wanting to move here later. Fast forward 20, 30 years, and we discovered the Hands On Children's Museum, before we even purchased our home here. We fell in love with this museum, and especially how it featured local spotlight and businesses with a warm, non-corporate, down-home feel. Needless to say, we've spent birthdays and playdates there. You've probably seen me overwhelmed carrying one of my sons out of there crying because it was time to go. This expansion proposal on the agenda tonight would be a perfect fit for this already up and running, well-staffed, well-known museum. This big ask to the city would shed some light on the pioneers of Hendersonville and the Walk of Fame exhibit by providing a better space. The People's Museum, a cultural history of Henderson County, is a necessary and relevant need in our city. There's a whole chunk of history right here waiting to be told, celebrated, and shared. Creating space and providing visibility to African American heritage is a step in the right direction that feels more important today than it did yesterday. This space will provide access for all, create education opportunities, and drive new interest to Main Street, all while providing visibility to part of history that's been missing here. I'm not a native, but I'm raising my babies here. I'm not a black woman, and I don't speak for the African American community, but they should have a voice and a place to tell their story. And Hands On is the place to do that and start that conversation with the kids. Thank you so much for your time and service. Please vote in favor of supporting the Hands On expansion.
Thank you, Ms. Cosgrove. I think we have one more person present who wishes to speak. That's Indion Jackson. If you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Indion Jackson, 11th Mountain Road, Hendersonville, North Carolina. Hey, guys. Hey, y'all, everybody. I just, you know, I'm here to speak on just one thing, but I do want to add. Y'all know I'm down for that museum. Oh, my God, I love it. So I'm in support of that. I hope you guys are, too. The one thing, the pay street purchase is the only thing that I wanted to speak on today. I just wanted to advise, well, just to remind you guys to please remember to consider a possible transition home or something that benefits the community or the youth in the community who are purchasing that home, and not just having it as an addition to the police department. And really, that's all I'm gonna say to you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Online, we should have Ken Fitch, who indicated he wishes to speak.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Yes, Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. We live in historic Hendersonville. It is our brand and our identity. And much of our attention is directed to preserving our historic buildings, districts, and Main Street. But history is also literally a story, the story of a people. And the story of our people has been told vibrantly and elegiacally by one of our most beloved storytellers, Tom Ohr. Time after time, in his weekly columns and public engagement, he has brought to our attention people of the past and the present in an arc of connection to generations of remarkable people. He would often begin one of his evocative columns standing in front of an historic building whose history he'd experienced or knew well. However, as seen through the prism of his theatrical imagination, instead of limiting the encounter to the historic facade, in his writing, the historic place would become a stage where persons known and unknown would be brought to life in fascinating interactions that encompass the full range of human experience that has formed our rich history and heritage. And renderings often vivid with evocation of remarkable personalities, but also sights and sounds, so that at the legendary teen canteen, we heard the songs of the day, and in the historic gyms, the sounds of basketballs bouncing on the gymnasium floor. He recently said, "I connect lives to history." And subtly but surely, he hooked us into that history of which we were and would become a part. For as we often discovered, he was not a passive actor. For example, devising, as he did in the Walk of Fame, a mechanism, or rather, an engine to compel and propel us to yearly action of remembrance of the people of our history. Of course, as I have indicated here once before, one might also characterize as a walk of fame his occasional strolls down Main Street, where at almost every corner and interval, he would be stopped and greeted by former students, former fellow classmates and colleagues, educators, public officials, politicians of all parties, members of civic boards, and readers of his work by the score. And this speaks to another of his special gifts, the ability to encourage and empower others to realize their full potential as individuals and members of community. He was generous and supportive in his encouragement, so that one would feel empowered to play a role that one might not have considered, on a stage, to be sure, but also on a community board or committee, or in a classroom, for example, where a shy teenage girl, too terrified to speak in front of a class, would be gently encouraged to step forward, to lead a discussion now as a young woman taking her place in the world. Yes, this empowerment of others is a living legacy that resides in the lives of the many whose paths you crossed. The archive of his writings, with their flashes of gentle, incomparable wisdom, poetry, history, and personal remembrance rendered in his unique elegiac voice, represents an irreplaceable document of human experience in this place. And it should join the Baker Barber collection to function as a pathway to endless exploration and revelation of life in this time and place. In his published column...
Wind up, please.
This is it. This is it. In his published column of Sunday, January 3rd, "The Day When His Great Heart Came To Arrest", in the column, he would state, quoting a Psalm, "As we begin a new year, I want to express my gratitude for the goodly heritage that is all around us. And now we must express our gratitude to Him for giving us an awareness and appreciation of that goodly heritage that now lives with us and within us always." Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else online that wishes to make comments?
Mayor, we have Lynn Williams and Kelly Spinks. Ms. Williams, you are now unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could give your name and address, please, for the clerk's record, and try to limit your comments to about two minutes. Set them at the low.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Williams. I'm at 309 Chadwick Avenue. Good evening, council members, and Happy New Year. Thank you for your time and service. Today, I wanted to comment and request the reduction of speed for Chadwick Avenue. I know we spoke about this before when we were brainstorming about the local development at 303 Chadwick, but I wanted to come back to the table here and express the urgency of needing to reduce the speed limit, preferably to 20 miles per hour. It's a residential zone, and during this time of COVID, more people are staying at home, sheltering in place. And there's children that play here, animals that live here. So we really need to get this street reduced in speed. There was two traffic studies that were completed by the city that you will be able to reference, showing at least 2,000 cars a day pass through here. Cars and vehicles zoom down the street very loud late at night and on the weekends. And I believe lowering the speed limit will reduce this noise. Councilwoman Simpson already expressed her support in the previous meeting for the reduction of the speed limit. Ideally, if we could have this implemented over the next month before the Chick-fil-A is completed, just around the corner. And along with that, there are 18-wheelers that pass through here. And I was wondering if we could get a sign that prevents vehicles with, say, over six axles going on this small residential street. So that was the first comment. And then just very quickly, just wanted to comment that the need for tree protections. Our neighborhood has lost over 150 trees in the past year. Many are part of a massive forest of mature trees that are being destroyed, surrounds the historic landmark of Brooklyn Manor, bordering Chadwick Avenue, Greenville Highway, Spartanburg Highway, and Shepherd Street. Our family recently designated a Hendersonville Heritage Tree for the first inclusion of this area. So I know Mr. Miller, Councilmember Miller, was interested in a tree ordinance, and I also want to just express the urgency of this, because we're having hundreds of trees being chopped down right now. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And there was one additional person.
Kelly Spinks, you've been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
I am Kelly Spinks. I am at 810 Dana Road in Hendersonville. I would like to express my views on two things that I'm very passionate about, and that is Hands On Children's Museum and the history of Henderson County. I think if you were to approve the People's Museum, it would be amazing, because it would allow Hands On, which now teaches STEM and arts, to encompass one more thing, and that would be the history of Henderson County, which is needed for our children in the area. And also the Walk of Fame. Not many people know about it. About 80% of people I've talked to lately, based on my little sample, didn't even know where it was, and these are locals to Hendersonville. So moving it to Main Street, giving it a prime location, they would get the recognition they deserve from the Walk of Fame. So I greatly push this to go through tonight. And that was all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spinks.
Madam Mayor, Kay Youngblood's raised her hand.
Okay.
Kay Youngblood, you've been unmuted.
And as with the others, if you could give your name and address for the clerk's record.
You'd plus press star six to unmute.
Kay Youngblood, 53, Lands End Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. I appreciate the chance to speak to you tonight as Chair of the Henderson County Walk of Fame Committee Regarding the Potential Partnership of the City of Hendersonville, Hands On Museum, the Henderson County Walk of Fame, and the People's Museum. Local historian and former Henderson County educator, Tom Ohr, who unexpectedly and unfortunately for our community passed away last week, worked diligently to create an organization which would honor those in our community who have made lasting positive contributions to Henderson County. Since that time, the Walk of Fame has honored many who have continued to impact us on a daily basis due to their service. It is a way to not only honor those who have walked before us, but also learn our local history and encourage us all to think of ways we can give back to a community which has given us so much. Since the origin of this project, we have continued to look for a permanent home to showcase the histories of these local heroes. It has been a balancing act to find the perfect place, which would enrich the look of our community while being physically responsible and while creating a safe, inviting space for our citizens to reflect on the history of our citizens. When talks began to host the People's Museum at the Hands On Museum, it made sense to also include the Walk of Fame, a space where we could celebrate both the many contributions from those who have given so much and the many ethnicities which have enriched our culture, a space where children could go to play and be introduced to the values our town holds close. I cannot imagine a stronger statement by our community than to support a project which proclaims our dedication to our children, our rich diversity, and those citizens who have made lasting contributions. To combine such entities under one roof would be such a unique and progressive idea. I would imagine other communities would soon follow suit. From a working standpoint, I know how much time and energy the Hendersonville City Government has invested in the Walk of Fame. While it would still be a committee of the city, this move would alleviate the time and work the city currently performs. Knowing how diligent the Hands On Museum has been in both protecting their funds and management of their facility, I feel comfortable in thinking this would be a long-term home based on the probable long life of the museum. Now, more than ever, due to the isolation children and adults alike have felt due to this pandemic, we need an outlet to provide a place to learn, work together, and celebrate as we return to normalcy. I can only imagine the many angles the city council must consider when making such a decision. I also know not any decision will be well-received by all community members. But having said that, I believe this project will increase the economic... economic development of local businesses and, most importantly, provide a space to showcase that which we hold dear. I strongly encourage the city council to consider this partnership. Thank you for your work, your time. Both are immeasurable. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Hi.
Madam Mayor, we've had two other hands raised.
I will accept these if they will limit themselves to one minute each.
All right. Barbie Britton, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Name and address for the clerk's record.
Sure, Barbie Britton, 1725 Bluebird Drive. And what I want to say is very short and sweet. I'm a mother of four-and-a-half-year-old twins that you may hear in the background. I'm a teacher in this awesome community, and I am a lover of children's museums. I've been to them in hun- not hundreds, but maybe tens of cities. Every time I go to a new city, I go to a children's museum. I'm also from Houston, Texas, one of the biggest cities in the United States that values diversity and its children's museum. And I'm 100% on board with the proposal that Hands-on just gave. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much.
And Hannah Duncan, you've been unmuted.
Hannah Duncan, 1754 Brevard Road. Hello, I am with the Arts Council of Henderson County, and I request that the members of city council consider the wonderful project that will be presented this evening by Hands-on Children's Museum. In a community that is diverse and rich with history, we feel that this free exhibit would be an asset to downtown Hendersonville. Representation matters, and when our community is given opportunities to embrace diversity in a positive and informative way, we are sending a powerful message of unity and inclusion to our children. It is important for children to see positive reflections of themselves so they know what exists and what they can aspire to be. Aside from the benefits as a community to tell the rich history of Henderson County through free public display, this project will be creating positive economic opportunities for our downtown businesses. Hands-on Children's Museum brings family from all over Hendersonville and surrounding counties. These families shop in our store and eat in our restaurants before and after visiting the children's museum. We ask that you consider these many benefits of this project, and thank you for all of your hard work during these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I hate to say this. You've got, just make you where Caroline Gump or just raised her hand.
One minute.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor and City Council, thank you for hearing us tonight, and thank you for your service. I am.
Name and address, please.
Oh, yes, 128 Poplar Loop, Flat Rock, North Carolina. I am also a downtown business owner. I know the value that Hands-on has to offer, and I have seen the proposal, and I think it is worth going for discovery. But I think that there is more information needed and more consideration needed before any motions could be voted on this evening. I'm in favor of going forward with examining this, but I do not think this should be a rushed project because it is a very large endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We are ready to start our business. We do have, if I can find the appropriate wording here, a policy that we have to follow since not all council members are present. The, I don't see here. For general statutes, the special rules that permit the remote meetings during a state of emergency are only applicable when either the governor or the North Carolina General Assembly has declared an emergency. In this case, the governor of North Carolina has declared an emergency on March 10th, 2020 with Executive Order 116. We are required to have a roll at the start of the meeting, which is our business portion right now. So if I would, I can call the roll. Mayor Barbara Bulke, present. And Simpson? Who do you think's been present?
Jeff Miller, present.
Mr. Smith?
Jerry Smith, present.
And Miss Hensley?
And Hensley, present.
Thank you. Our current policy for remote participation indicates that a council member needs to give 48 hours advance notice. Mr. Smith did this. Ms. Hensley was not able to do this. But our first item of business is to modify our policy. At this point, Ms. Hensley would not be allowed to comment or vote on this. But we do have a motion to amend our remote participation policy. Would either Ms. Speaker or Mr. Conant want to comment before we? Old Mama, there's a motion to propose to waive the policy for tonight's meeting as to all members, and then to adopt a resolution that's been distributed to delete the 48-hour notice requirement from the policy. Okay. Would someone like to make that first motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council waive the 48-hour advance notice for remote participation in electronic meetings for council members required by the city's policy respecting electronic attendance at city council meetings for the January 7th, 2021 regular city council meeting to adopt the resolution to amend the city's policy respecting electronic attendance at city council meetings to remove the 48-hour notice requirement.
Is there any discussion? Not, we will do a roll call vote on approving waiving the 48-hour notice. This is a city policy. It has nothing to do with state policy, so we are able to do this on our own. Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Simpson, hi. Mr. Smith?
Hi.
And the mayor votes aye. So the vote is approved, and we are waiving that notice. So from here on out, Ms. Hensley will be able to participate in the votes as well. We have a motion next to approve our agenda, and there are certain items to be removed from the agenda and one added. Mr. Conant, he was going to do some explanation of this.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of the city council would like to remove items 5Q, 10B, 10E, and then add a new item, 5Q, which is related to the amendment to approve of a first amended and restated utility extension agreement for the Clear Creek Development on the agreements between the City of Hendersonville for utility extensions with Clear Creek Investment Group LLC. So we'd ask the city council to, that is item, the new item, 5Q. So we'd ask to remove the first three items and then add item 5Q under the consent agenda.
And Madam Mayor, add a closed session. There's also. Add a closed session, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to approve, move to approve the agenda with those changes?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council amend and approve the agenda of removing items 5Q, 10B, 10E, and adding new item 5Q. Resolution to approve first amended and restated utility extension agreement and adding a closed session as permitted in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A, 135, and 6.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not, we will vote on approving the amended agenda. Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Ms. Hensley? Hensley? That would go to Ms. Simpson.
Aye.
Okay. Essentially, you said aye. Okay. And Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And the mayor also votes aye. So that is adopted. We have our agenda. Next is the remaining items on the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like.
If you're, if you're, we probably need to recognize ourselves. State your name when you're commenting so it's very clear for the clerk's record.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Jerry Smith, speaking here. I'd like to ask for item 5B to be put on the regular agenda. I have an item I'd like to discuss with regard to the meeting schedule.
Okay, so we can put that under nine, new business, make that G.
Sure.
That regarding the city council meeting schedule.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? If not, a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council approve the consent agenda as amended, removing 5B.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion? If not, we will again do the roll call vote. I'd like to mix it up. Ms. Simpson, aye. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Aye.
And the mayor also votes aye. That the items on the consent agenda have to be approved. The two public hearings were not advertised as they shouldn't have been, so we are going to look at postponing those. Would someone like to make the motion to reschedule those meetings?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council reschedule the following public hearings to the next regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, February 4th, 2021, at 5:45 PM in the second floor. Councilmember chambers of city hall located at 1606th Avenue East, or as soon as there are as possible to consider the following two minutes.
Okay, and those two are the conditional zoning district for the Cedars and the conditional zoning district for Carlton Collins Architecture ELLC. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion? Not, we will vote on rescheduling those public hearings. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the mayor also votes aye. Okay, we had no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business. And the first item of new business is Hands-on Children's Museum partnership proposal.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Knight, and I have the great privilege of serving as the executive director of Hands-on Children's Museum. This evening, I am pleased to present a proposed public partnership between Hands-on Children's Museum and the City of Hendersonville to develop the People's Museum for the Walk of Fame, a cultural history of Hendersonville and Henderson County. During trying times like these, it's easy to get bogged down in the struggles that we face. However, there's nothing more uplifting than seeing children and adults light up with a sense of wonder when they learn something new. This evening, I would like to invite you to join me in visioning a brighter and more prosperous future for the children and adults of our great city. Hands-on was founded in 2004 and opened its doors of discovery in 2007, the children of Hendersonville and Henderson County. Just mere months after the museum opened to the community for the very first time, the Great Recession of 2008 gun. Times are challenging in the early days of Hands-on, but thanks to generosity and support of the Hendersonville City Council and so many other businesses and foundations and individuals, Hands-on not only survived its opening during the Great Recession, but thrashed their act. Hands-on was literally built and is sustained by the community. The museum has served over 400,000 people throughout western North Carolina since 2007. And over the years, attendance in the museum has grown consecutively. In 2017, the museum began strategically exploring options to grow and expand to meet the growing population of our city and our region. After extensive research at a variety of expansion options, a decision was ultimately made by the museum leadership to keep Hands-on in the heart of Hendersonville's historic downtown district. The building the museum occupies is divided into two sections on the Main Street level. In early 2018, the museum secured a 99-year lease for Unit 1 of its building. For those who have visited the museum, Hands-on proper is considered Unit 3. So Unit 3, back of the building, and Unit 1 is the front. With the security of this additional space, the museum was positioned to expand from a 5,000-square-foot footprint to an 11,000-square-foot footprint, doubling in size. In July 2018, the museum secured a very generous financial investment from the City of Hendersonville and the Community Foundation of Henderson County to hire a professional and globally-recognized museum architectural firm, Haste Studio, to develop a comprehensive master plan to develop a comprehensive master plan to renovate and expand Hands-on. In two thousand nineteen, nearly half a dozen community input meetings were facilitated by parents, business owners, government officials, teachers, and of course, our community's most important asset, its children. We collected all of these thoughts and ideas to develop a collective vision of what a children's museum for Hendersonville could look like. With the completion of the master plan in two thousand nineteen, the museum was poised to launch its capital campaign for expansion in two thousand twenty. In March twenty twenty, the museum was ordered to close and remained closed for six consecutive months due to the pandemic. Had the pandemic not happened, there would not be a People's Museum in Providence. This idea would have surfaced. In the spring of twenty twenty, the harsh thing of social injustice was felt deeply throughout all corners of our nation and even within our community. During these times, many people took to the streets to voice their pain, their frustration, their thirst for a more peaceful world that is free of racism and social injustice. In the immediate aftermath of the peaceful demonstrations that took place locally, the conversation began about finding a lasting one to honor African-Americans and other people of color within our community. One idea that was brought up by many people in our community was the development of an African-American history museum and cultural center. Hands-on was built by and for this community. The idea of creating a children's museum in two thousand was come about because of a need to have a fun, safe, and educational indoor resource for the children of this great city. Hands-on is committed to meeting the educational needs of children and their adult caregivers. Our organization understands there is a need to have a site, a unique place to preserve the history of African-Americans in addition to other ethnic groups within our city and county. Understanding this need, Hands-on has reimagined how it serves community and expand within its building. We have strategically gone back to the drawing board for expansion and have determined that the most efficient and developmentally appropriate way to educate the public about the history and culture of the people of Hendersonville and Henderson County is to develop a new division of Hands-on. On behalf of the children and adults that we serve, I'm pleased to introduce the creation of the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. Next slide. The People's Museum will be a one-of-a-kind cultural learning experience with an approximately eight hundred square foot space that will preserve, promote, and display the unique culture of the people of Hendersonville and Henderson County. The People's Museum celebrates the diversity of all ethnic groups and preserves the legacy of local trailblazers who make our community a unique place to live, work, and play. The museum will foster a safe and educational learning environment that celebrates the diversity of the people of Hendersonville, Henderson County, in particular, the African-American experience. The museum will also empower the people of Hendersonville and Henderson County to discover how their histories, culture, and values have shaped their community into the beautiful gem it is today. By the more, this museum will preserve unique cultural history and legacies of local trailblazers throughout Hendersonville and Henderson County in perpetuity. And finally, the People's Museum will help children and adults of all ages to attain a better understanding of themselves and their world through vivid and interactive exhibit experiences. To ensure this cultural resource is accessible to all, admission to the People's Museum and Walk of Fame division of Hands-on will be free to the general public. We want to make sure that someone's financial predisposition is not a barrier to utilizing an important resource like the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. Members of the Hendersonville Henderson County community will be invited to help develop the thematic elements of the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. We want people of all backgrounds and all walks of life to be a part of helping us develop this critical and important cultural resource. Next slide, please. The museum will also tell the unique stories of many facets of African-American history as it relates to our city and our accounting and even national. A few examples of some of the stories that we convey within this new space includes the story of the king of the happy land, the history of the Seventh Avenue area, known to some locals as Brooklyn, the history of the Ninth Avenue school. The museum will also tell the unique story of the segregation of schools in Hendersonville and Henderson County in addition to recognizing the accomplishments of prominent African-American families within our community. The People's Museum will provide a permanent indoor location for the inductees of the Walk of Fame. Next slide, please. The design of the Walk of Fame will be similar to the National Baseball Hall of Fame. Hands-on Children's Museum is a major economic driver for area small businesses in downtown Hendersonville's historic district. As of two thousand nineteen, Hands-on Children's Museum attracted nearly forty thousand visitors to its facility with an economic impact of approximately one point six million dollars for our economy. Conservatively, we forecast that approximately twenty thousand new visitors will experience the People's Museum and Walk of Fame, generating an additional economic impact of roughly six hundred thousand dollars. The target audience for the People's Museum will be primarily youth ages ten and up and adults. In total, the economic impact of the Children's Museum and the People's Museum divisions of Hands-on will be approximately two point two million dollars. In addition to the economic impact of both the Children's Museum and People's Museum division of Hands-on, the facility itself will become, for the first time ever, a field trip destination for schools within Henderson County and from other surrounding counties. If you've ever been to Hands-on Children's Museum, you'll quickly realize the space is small. And usually, when schools plan a field trip, they want to build a whole gray block. Because of our size, we can't accommodate a whole gray block. But with this new addition, we'll be able to become a unique field trip destination. And we forecast serving an additional eight thousand students through physical visitation alone. Overall, we forecast that the total reach for the Children's Museum and the People's Museum will attract nearly seventy thousand visitors annually to Hendersonville's historic downtown district post COVID nineteen. The cost to open the new Walk of Fame and People's Museum division of Hands-on is as follows. We predict that for exhibit design and fabrication thereof, the cost is forty thousand. Exhibit installation and general constructions, reconfiguring the space, hundred thousand dollars. We built in a contingency of ten percent, fourteen thousand, totaling one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to open this new cultural facility. Our goal is to complete all the facility and exhibit work within a six to eight month period after we've completed our fundraising campaign. This evening, we are respectfully asking the city of Hendersonville to consider making a financial investment to support the People's Museum and Walk of Fame over a five-year period. An investment in the city of Hendersonville will ensure Hands-on can provide a world-class history museum, indoor Walk of Fame, and children's museum experience to the citizens of this great city and beyond. Council members, in your agenda packets, you have a proposal that details the ask we are making. We are asking for a five-year commitment to this project. Commitment for year one will be seventy-eight thousand dollars. With half of those proceeds going towards the cost of constructing the exhibits and dealing with the general construction of the People's Museum, the other half of that allocation goes towards the cost of supporting the lease of unit one, which is where the People's Museum will reside. Years two through five, we are requesting forty-two thousand dollars per year between years two and five to support part of the lease payments for unit one. This creates a total investment over a five-year period of two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We understand that this is a lot of money. But we also understand the museum's responsibility and every adult's responsibility in this great city to ensure we have the proper resources for our children to make sense of not only themselves, but their world. We know the pandemic has affected all of us. Pandemic in particular has really affected our children. Places like Hands-on and the People's Museum and Walk of Fame is going to be critical towards helping children and adults for that matter regain a sense of normalcy within their lives while learning about wonders of great history that's happened in their own backyard. With that being said, I want to thank this council for its many years of support for Hands-on Children's Museum. There are many museums in this country who will not survive this pandemic. But thankfully, because of your support over the years and the support of so many businesses and individuals and foundations, Hands-on Children's Museum is positioned to not only survive this COVID nineteen pandemic, but thrive their act. However, in order for us to realize our vision for bringing this new division of Hands-on to life, we do respectfully ask your consideration of support for this great project. On behalf of our board of directors and over four hundred thousand children adults have served two thousand seven, I thank you for your consideration of this request.
Does anyone have any questions? Any questions? Okay.
No, well, let's stop for a minute. I'd think, uh, very good presentation, thank you, Joseph, I appreciate it, I've enjoyed talking to you leading up to this. I am, I am concerned for a couple of reasons about making the decision tonight, just dropping it that we're going to do it. We have had discussions that we do want to have a museum. Originally, it was, uh, you know, it's been called several names now, if it's the People's Museum, that's, that's fine, that's good. I guess the Walk of Fame would become the Wall of Fame. Do it that way, that's, that's good. But we as a council have not, I guess, charged city staff with finding a location because we still didn't know exactly what we were going to put in this, uh, this museum. I'm absolutely for the museum. From the get-go have been and would like to see it, but I don't feel like it's our choice to pick where it is. I know I talked to Melinda Lawrence, uh, president of the local chapter of NAACP, and she said she had not yet gotten to present it to, you know, to her, uh, folks there to, to judge this, her chapter, and that she would like the opportunity for you to go there or however they could do it and have that discussion. I don't believe our diversity committee has discussed it. And what I'm looking for is, I don't think it's for us to pick where it is. I would like, personally, I think it's a great location, I think it has a lot. I really, it's, it's a ton there going for it. I love the fact that it would be monitored all the time, I love the fact it's already a museum in some ways, you know. You know, a place to go to for the kids, because we wanted kids to be there. We have two different players in it, uh, the Wall, the Wall of Fame, the People's Museum. We haven't had, we don't know any plans yet for either. Is eight hundred feet sufficient? And I know there's some wiggle room there potentially. What happens after the five years, the way this is presented? It's, I'm just not comfortable with this, this plan moving forward, but I am comfortable with asking staff to work with you and work with creating something like this, a partnership. But I don't think that there's a real urgent need for you to have this money this week or you guys are going to go, go away. I would rather put some planning with both groups together and bring in the folks that are going to really be designing and picking what's in this museum. I don't know what that is, and, and we haven't had the opportunity to really look at it. I think the number, uh, like you said, it's a hundred thousand dollars for the build out. I think that's low to really put in there what we want, a real interactive museum. And I like the fact that some of the money from the first years and included in that, right?
That's correct.
All right, but now I'm, I'm all in with trying to work with this, I am. I just want our people involved in, in some of the planning and the people that will actually come up with the things that go in the museum, also involved in it. If you would consider that.
It's definitely something we would like to consider. But another reality that our organization faces is the fact that we're charged with ensuring that Hands-on as an entity will exist in perpetuity, which is spirit of all museums. No museum has ever started to only be temporary. And given the realities of the pandemic, if we are not able to justify a reason for maintaining the unit one space, then strategically, we may have to let that space go. And if that happens, we would not have that prime location for the People's Museum division.
Oh, I was confused, I thought you'd already signed the lease line.
So we're, we're in active renegotiations with the owner of unit one. He's been amazing to work with throughout this whole process. He knows we're having this meeting tonight. And he has actually agreed to make some concessions to our original lease that actually makes it to where despite the current trend of things with our revenues as we watch the pandemic, it would be a financial commitment that would make sense to support. So there is a time factor as part of that we would love for our facility to be the home of the People's Museum, but we also are aware of our realities to ensure that Hands-on itself will exist in perpetuity. And I just want to say a couple of other things. You know, we really want this community to be a part deciding what the content is for the People's Museum. Because it's a museum for the people. And I really think, just from my experience designing museums, it can be difficult to get into the weeds, so to speak, determining what that content is if you don't have a space that is selected. You know, most museums when they start up, I mean, looking to create a space, we go ahead and secure a building, and then they use that footprints to plan within. That's how Hands-on was created, if wrong with any other museums. So, well, I definitely understand your perspective on that. There's the reality that from a logistical standpoint, it's difficult to plan what you're going to have if you don't know what that footprint is going to look like. And we have been working with same architectural firm that did the master plan for Hands-on. They have been very gracious to work with us to determine a way to develop history museum experience that is sustainable. We think of eight hundred square feet, it may not sound like a lot of space, but it is a fair amount of space. And speaking with the architects, we feel that we can adequately display artifacts and storyboards and placards in a way that would be sufficient, given the projected attendance that we foresee with this museum. Um, of course, um, again, I definitely appreciate and respect your comments on that. But those are some other factors to consider.
So I have some comments. Uh, this is Jennifer Enslie speaking. I want to start out by saying I love Hands-on Gallery, my children absolutely love Hands-on Gallery. And my husband actually built one of the first mud run courses for Hands-on, uh, with the Beckys. And so we have been very big supporters of Hands-on for many years. My concern about this project, and, uh, Joseph, you and I talked about an interactive children's, um, black history museum back in summer, uh, I think back in June. And, uh, so this is something I completely support and would love to see happen. I guess my thing is, is I feel like the timing of this seems super rushed. A two hundred and forty-six thousand dollar commitment from the city is a lot of money. And from what I understand, there will have to be either ways of getting that revenue or program cuts to get it. And for me, you guys know that I chair the Henderson County Social Services Board. Uh, and for me, you guys know that I chair the Henderson County Social Services Board. And, um, so I'm very passionate about children, um, and needy adults in this community. And I wanna just throw out some stats that I have, um, that are basically due to COVID and pandemic times. Uh, Henderson County has taken in, uh, approximately thirty additional foster children over the last couple of months. We are up to a hundred and eighty-eight children in foster care in our community, um, currently. And that is up from a hundred and thirty-six this time last year. Uh, we're taking in much larger family units this time, a lot, much more cases of severe abuse and neglect have been substantiated. So, um, these kids are coming into custody. Um, the county and the community need additional resources for foster care for foster families. Um, do you know that our Adult Protective Services cases are up ninety-nine point three percent? Um, these are adults that have been, um, reported as abused or neglected or not living in um, healthy environments. Uh, another statistic is that forty-two percent of Henderson County kids are in poverty currently. And so my concern is that if we have this kind of money right now to spend, um, are we feeding our kids in our community? Are we clothing them? Are we making sure they're getting adequate heat? Um, LEAP, the Crisis Energy, uh, has received an additional hundred applicants this month prior to last time, this time last year. And so with all of this mounting, while I love this project and I love the idea of it, I just would like to see some, um, longer range goals, plans. Uh, I, I've spoken with a couple of leaders from the African-American community and they, um, had opinions that this might not be the best location. And so I just, uh, I just am not ready to make a, a firm commitment on it. And while I am happy to continue discussing it, I do think that this is potentially more of a budget discussion for us at our February budget meeting, uh, where we can prioritize, where we can actually set aside this kind of money, if that's what the council, you know, would consider doing. But I just, um, super concerned about committing this kind of money. And, uh, you know, while I feel like this is a strong want for our community, I wanna see this happen. Uh, I feel like there's a lot of needs right now in the community that are not being completely met. And there's a lot of financial demands on many nonprofits in this community. And, uh, I just think we need to kind of look at those priorities right now. And, you know, that's how I feel about it.
Other comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go next, but I don't know if Lindsay has got ready to, started to speak because I can't see her.
You can go ahead, Jerry.
Okay. First of all, Joseph, thank you very much for the presentation. You put a lot of time and effort into that. Thank you for visiting council tonight and talking to us. It's an incredible project and like all new projects, it has its strengths and it has some weaknesses, like anything new. Taking the first step for something new is always a challenge, especially when there are varied opinions about what it's gonna look like. And that's the nature of telling history in art, is there are different points of view. And this, uh, falls directly within that because ultimately, a group of people are gonna put together the exhibits that go in there. And certainly, uh, Joseph, you have, uh, done your part to make it clear that that group of people will be diverse and will have a say in what's gonna go in there. And it's not just Joseph Knight's People Museum. So we appreciate what you've done to, to bring in as many points of view as possible. In addition to the multiple speakers who have spoken tonight at Public Comment, as well as the multiple emails that we've received heading into the meeting tonight, I'm certainly very much in favor of this project, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, first of all, I think it's our best opportunity to get it done um, in a location which is very prominent, which is Main Street. What a great place to tell the story of any group of people, Main Street. And this is our best opportunity to get it done in that location. Okay? Next, with regard to the budget costs, uh, I'm gonna use the number sixteen million dollars as a round number for, for budget costs, which is sort of where our, our current budget is. I know that in the coming years, well, at least every year that I've been on council, that budget number has gone up every year. So I anticipate that will continue to be the case as we move forward over the next five years. There's no guarantee, but that's generally what has happened. Um, so at our current, uh, I use our sixteen million dollars at our current budget level. The cost of the first year, which is seventy-eight thousand dollars, is point five percent of our sixteen million dollar budget. And then in the, then the other two years, two through four, it would be point three percent of our sixteen million dollar budget. So it is a, a very small amount of our budget costs, um, to be able to participate in this project. And, and all that Joseph has asked is this money here. He recognizes that it's his responsibility as well as the board to step forward and raise the rest of the funds to help build out the museum, which is exactly what you would want to happen. You want as much of the, the community as possible to have, uh, a, a financial stake in building this out, um, because you want as many people possible to take part in this. So that looks, I, I'm excited about his ability to raise those funds. Okay? Um, to answer a couple of things that were said by Councilman Miller and Councilmember Hensley. Um, uh, the build out was a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, not a hundred thousand dollars. So, um, it is a little bit more than, than what was said earlier. Um, with regard to city being involved in the planning, um, certainly, um, as has been requested by Council members, uh, Mr. Knight has met with John Condon and Brian Polly prior to this meeting to assure them of the financial stability of Hands-on. Um, so that he had, he has shown that he's willing to do that, and I'm sure he will continue to do that as we move forward with this project. So I think he's established that he is very much in favor of having the cities involved in and helping put this together. Um, I also like to point out, uh, with regard to the future of Hands-on, uh, that it is going to survive this pandemic and it's going to prosper. So it is not an organization that's going to be leaving Main Street. I'd also like to address, uh, some of Councilmember Hensley's comments. First of all, I am a foster parent. So I completely agree that it is a crisis right now. Um, and that we need as many people as possible to step forward and be foster parents for the kids who need care. Um, it is, um, a, a diff, very difficult time right now in Henderson County for a lot of families economically. And generally, when that happens, many family problems, uh, begin to surface. So I certainly, for those that are on Zoom tonight with us, I'd like to encourage anyone who's ever thought about being a foster parent, this is a great time to do it. I will also add that as a foster parent, I completely support this project because we're not only feeding kids, um, the food they need to eat, and we're not only feeding kids with the love that they need, but ultimately, we're feeding their minds. And as Joseph has already said earlier, it's gonna be free. Okay? This is an opportunity for people to come in for free. So it doesn't matter your economic background. You're gonna get a chance to enjoy the Walk of Fame and the People's Museum. Finally, I'd just like to say that, um, the, the arguments of, of waiting for a later time, while certainly anybody would love to do that and have more time to think about things, Joseph and Hands-on is under a time crunch. So they have to decide whether or not to keep Unit One. And the only reason that we're here today is Joseph has held his landlord up and said, "Look, I have an, an idea that I'd like to do, or I'd like for Hands-on to do with the City of Hendersonville. Would you give me one more month to present it to them and see if we can make it work?" And if it doesn't work, then Hands-on probably is not gonna keep Unit One because the, uh, difficulty of the pandemic, um, is not gonna be something they can keep right now. Okay? So while they're in a good, stable position, they do need our help with regard to extending into that space. And they either have to sign or change that lease for that location or not in twenty-twenty-one. And that's why we're here tonight, because it's decision-making time for his landlord as to whether or not to extend that lease under the concessions that he's willing to make. And part of that is knowing that the city is going to assist Hands-on for the next five years to, to be able to hold that location. So the time is now to make this happen. Um, and we have a great location for it. We have a great presentation. We have a lot of community support for it. Everything has not been solved for that, what needs to go into this, but that's the beauty of it. As Joseph said, we get the location and then we figure out how to fill it up with the most engaging exhibits that we can. So I strongly support this project and I'd like to encourage council to vote for it when we vote on it here in just a few moments.
Jerry, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, from what I understand, Hands-on, you guys had most of your rent in twenty-twenty forgiven. Is that correct for that front section? And so I guess my concern is, is if, so unless they get this money from the city, they can't afford to, to maintain that spot. Is that what I'm understanding?
So the reality of our situation is, we wanna make sure that we are good stewards of our funding. And given the realities of the pandemic, we do not forecast our revenue trends returning to normal for another six months. We've been very conservative with our budgeting. And if we do not have an active project to go in that space, then financially, it does not make the business sense for us to renegotiate a lease for a space that does not have the necessary exhibits to drive visitor traffic or revenue for that matter.
And how many employees did you guys maintain in twenty-twenty?
So we maintained all but two positions. Apparently, we have two full-time employees and four part-time employees.
And you guys, um, you guys did, you were able to, uh, obtain the PPP loan and an idle loan uh, with payroll and that kind of thing in twenty-twenty. Um, and then your payroll was still quite high, from what I understand, in twenty-twenty. Is that right?
So our payroll actually went down after the pandemic occurred because we made adjustments to our staffing. And I, I do wanna add, just while we're talking dollars, that it's, it's very humbling to me as director of this organization to see the type of community support that we have, um, that's been shown to us throughout this whole pandemic. I'd like to announce that we have some exciting news, even without the future of the space being secured. Our organization was secure, was successful, is securing a twenty thousand dollar grant with Dogwood Trust to develop an African-American history exhibit slash museum. In addition to offering families in our community who receive food assistance with the opportunity to not just visit the People's Museum, but the Children's Museum Division of Hands-on for free. So we are very excited to announce that tonight. And we're also very excited to be able to evolve to meet the needs of the children and families who are struggling during this pandemic. I, I just wanna say that while food and shelter is critical needs to address, I'm, I'm amazed by how much visioning I see from members of our council. And I think this proposal is another opportunity for us to really become visionary as to see what we want our community to look like after we get past the immediate threat of COVID-19. You know, children's museums, history museums are safe and inclusive spaces. And I think the first part of the healing process for our children and for their parents especially will be to have a safe place to go to once restrictions are lifted and things are heading back to normal. So if the city council did approve the proposal as it is written, we would have, in addition to that twenty thousand dollars, an additional thirty-nine thousand of seventy-eight, giving us a total of fifty-nine thousand dollars secured towards the fundraising goal of bringing the People's Museum online. And I'm pleased to say that we have reached out to our private donors informally and also foundations who have supported us in the past about this project. And there's been support expressed of finding ways to work with us to realize the goals we want to achieve. So I'm encouraged that fundraising, the additional dollars needed to bring this online can be done.
So, first of all, I wanna say that I fully support, um, this project for the People's Museum and the Walk of Fame. And I've been a big champion of Hands-on Children's Museum. As a mother, when we moved to the city, the first thing we did was look up things that you can do with your kids. And as more and more families move here and folks are raising their families, we need places for children to go and activities for families to do. And Hands-on were fortunate enough to have in our downtown and they are an asset. Uh, we also are in a unique position. You know, just a couple of months ago, we all sat in a room and we had a meeting about diversity and equity. And we spoke about how we wanted to do something that would be long-lasting. We don't wanna just stick a Band-Aid on it and move on. We wanna do something that means something and progresses the community forward. After we had that meeting and after the events that occurred in the summer, you know, Joseph and Hands-on have brought to us a proposal that does exactly what we said we wanted to do. Now, to say this is an unprecedented time is, you know, probably not enough. And timing, um, there's a lot going on right now. But I have to say that we also have to think holistically when it comes to our community. And as a couple of people have mentioned earlier, we do need to think about what we want our community to be and look like at the end of the pandemic. Uh, this pandemic will not be forever and we will recover. And thankfully, we live in a community that is still thriving even, even through this pandemic. Um, so I think it's important to, to pursue this project and the time is now to keep going, not just for Hands-on, but for us to fulfill a promise that we made to our community, saying that we were going to make a difference and do something different. And we can't push it down the pike like so many times that has been done in the past. There have been plenty instances throughout history where leaders have said, "Oh, we're gonna make changes and we're going to do stuff." And then it just keeps getting pushed down and pushed down and pushed down. And I don't want this to be another one of those instances when we have an organization locally that has experience in building museums that can help us. If we were to try to build something like this on our own, I can only imagine how much staff time and money it would take for us to plan it, not having the experience that Joseph and Hands-on have. So the other thing I wanna say is that there is still a lot to figure out. This is just the beginning of the process. And as Joseph mentioned earlier, he wants to work with other community members to help build these exhibits. You know, maybe you can have community meetings like you had with your master plan and get input from kids. What questions do they have about the history of Henderson County? What, you know, how do the leaders of the NAACP imagine we would talk about their organization? Um, or working with Crystal Colly or anybody else who's had experience in researching and already developing exhibits that can help here? So it's the beginning of the process. I think right now we need to worry about securing this space to put it. I have no doubt in my mind that this is the perfect space to do it. And the best way for us to be able to fulfill one of the promises we made a couple of months ago to our community now and not way far in the future.
I just wanna add one comment in regards to the concern about the budget for the project. We know that the forecasted cost does seem low and does seem to be low. And that's intentional because Hands-on literally is a children's museum that was built by and for the community. You know, there have been so many people, so many business owners who work in the construction industry who donated their time, donated materials in some instances to help us get the museum off the ground fourteen years ago. And even during the pandemic, we made a big safety change to the museum. We replaced all of our floors. Previously, we had mulch and now we have um, tile floor system and carpet squares. And yet again, members of this community not only stepped up to donate funding recovered off the project, but also a local flooring company. but also a local flooring company stepped up to donate labor for it, which allowed us to do some really cool things in the museum. So this project for People's Museum, the construction of it really will be one that requires the participation of not only those who can give with their treasures, but also those who give with their talents and their gifts and their professions.
Question to start with, back when you were doing your master plan, including Unit One, you were depending on, uh, your revenues at the door, your annual memberships, your fundraising and all of that. How did, how did your budget look for, uh, being able to do that expansion that you were planning at that point?
Well, our budget looked really good at that point. Strategically, Hands-on has relied, has relied a lot on contributed revenue, like most museums nationally do. Now, we weren't Hands-on to exist in perpetuity. And a big step towards achieving that is setting up this organization to operate off of mostly earned revenues through ticket sales. And with the expansion plans that we originally had, we not only were going to have a larger facility to serve the people, but we were going to have facility design to serve the audiences. You know, most children's museums, most of their, most of their, their visitation is made from field trips. For us, it's people coming in through the door, family, members. We have very few field trips coming to the museum presently because of its size. So from a financial standpoint, we were on track with our projections after we got the renovation was done, the additional square footage online, to be in a position to where most of our revenue is going to be earned compared to how it is now, which is contributed. We feel having a museum that operates primarily off of earned revenue is a healthy model. Hard one to get to, but one, I feel this community certainly will accomplish.
If you receive, as things start opening up again, um, if you are able to do this expansion, at any way of predicting, looking at your finances going forward, when you would be able to be somewhat self-sufficient?
Yes. So for the 2021 fiscal year, our fiscal year of fiscal calendar, we're forecasting an 80% loss in admission revenue between now and June. Um, that's a very conservative forecast. I hope it's not that bad. But the reality is, things aren't going to get back to normal until the spat seems valid distributed. So we're forecasting our admission revenues and also revenues from birthday parties and memberships to return to normal in July. And they continue to grow thereafter. The support that we're asking over the five-year period with this proposal is designed to allow us to generate, allow us to have time to generate the resources necessary to sustain and grow the People's Museum Division of Hands-on. People's Museum initially is going to start by telling stories about African-American experience. But we also want to appropriate stories from other cultures within this community. And to tell those stories adequately, we're going to have to do fundraising and grant riding and, you know, secure income support. So the five-year commitment that we're asking gives us the flexibility to be able to sustain the expenses that we must, which is the cost of having Unit One, while we're working to secure additional dollars from the private sector to support the development of those exhibits until we get the People's Museum where we want it to be, which is essentially having exhibit areas that recognizes ethnicity or ethnic groups throughout the community into town.
The rent for the entire, um, Unit One is, uh, $78,000 a year.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Mayor.
And then the $36,000 comes in from the coffee shop. So the $42,000, just looking at, excuse me, square footage, uh, the People's Museum is a very small portion of that. So in, in essence, we would be subsidizing the rest of Hands-on's rent, not just the People's Museum part of it. It would be, it would be a city subsidy to assist Hands-on.
The short answer is yes to that because half of the space that's a part of that Unit One would be used for children's museums exhibits. If it, if it's appropriate, could we go to the previous slide that showed the floor plan? I'd like to point something out. Perfect. That's the one I need. So what's unique about the Unit One space is that not only do we have an allocation for the People's Museum and the Walk of Fame, which will since come to Wall of Fame, we also have flexible space to the right that we're planning to turn into Art and Maker Lab. Um, those green lines that you see dividing the space, the glass partition, the idea of this exhibit is to allow children the opportunity to get ideas to create different works of art by observing the unique exhibits that are going to be showcased inside People's Museum. Another unique aspect about this particular layout of Unit One is that it gives us flexibility for expansion. We may find out that after we start incorporating exhibit elements from different minority groups within the space that we need to expand People's Museum to ensure that it is adequate. So we would have the flexibility to do that within this space because the design of the Art and Maker Lab area is very flexible. It is essentially tables and chairs with supplies hanging the wall. So while the rent will also be supporting that part of the space that is not directly related to the People's Museum, it also gives us flexibility to expand that part if the need arises.
Okay, I, I just want to be very clear that if we're just looking at space, we as a city would be contributing more than, quote, "the floor space that we would have."
Yes, that, that is correct.
All right. So, so what? Part of the request is a subsidy for general operating, uh, for Hands-on?
Part of it is, part of it is a subsidy for supporting
Yeah.
just the cost of the rent. Um, it would not go towards other operating expenses.
Right, but that helps everything else if we're taking part of the rent.
Yes.
I, I do feel that Hands-on is a, um, an important part of downtown. I was very happy that it was on Main Street and is on Main Street. And I do support it. My, and, and in, I'm actually willing to go along with the proposal. But what I would like to see, rather than a definite five-year commitment of certain amounts, is that every year, the budget would be reviewed. That, okay, you're doing really well. We can cut down some on the city's payment. I, I just, I, I think that would be more reasonable, um, than to say, okay, we're just going to give this for the next five years. Um, I'd like to see it reviewed every year to, um, see how things are going. If the city wants, chooses to make this commitment to the People's Museum and Walk of Fame, and if that is part of, you know, something, something that the city chooses to subsidize, that's, that's fine. That's, I think that's sort of another whole issue that we would have to look at. But, um, I, I don't want to see Hands-on, um, go away. And so I, I'm willing to make these contributions with those understandings, knowing that we are, we are subsidizing the work of, uh, the expenses of Hands-on one way or another. We're not just providing all this money for the People's Museum. It is, it is part of it. And I would like to see it looked at every year.
Mayor Mayor, I believe that is fair. Um, I do, I would like to request, um, one consideration. Would this council be in support of committing for Year One and Two? And then doing the revisit on Years Three, Three, Five? And I only ask that because in my opinion, we really are not going to see a normal year until 2022. The first six months of 2021, you know, is going to be lackluster. Um, and for us, from a fundraising standpoint, I feel it will give our current donors and prospective donors more confidence in our project if we could have a commitment with the understanding there would be a review after Year Two.
Comments on my comments?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor Volk. Jerry Smith here talking. Let's not forget that he's not charging people to come into this museum. It's free. And let's not forget.
Museum, yes.
Correct. For the People's Museum. So it's a, it's an entity that is free to the public. And let's not forget that human beings have to look after that. So there'll be some of Joseph's time and some of the other employees' time. So I recognize if we're looking at this picture, we're just drawing that line. I know it's not exactly halfway, but it's somewhere close to halfway that, um, if you're doing the money, $18,000 is going for the, uh, the People's Museum Walk of Fame, the other $18,000, and that's, in essence, is going for the rent for the Art Maker Lab. But let's not forget that we're not charging. It's a free thing for anyone to attend, to come to. And we need their employees' help to make this run. And we've not offered, or, or we've not been asked, nor I don't want to, to have to put any city employees in there to make that happen. So I think that there, there should be some grace there with regard to the funding and understanding that if you want to call it a subsidy for Hand-On, it is also a subsidy for helping keep that space open um, each, uh, month or year, excuse me, um, with regard to it being, being free to the public to attend.
Yeah, I realize that. And that's what I meant, that at some point, we may want to contribute something toward, um, the operation of that. That's why I think, I think just making this commitment for five years out, there are just a lot of moving pieces further down that, um, we need to be looking at.
So I guess I have a question, um, Mayor Volk. Then if we were going to word this, trying to think of the, the legalese for this, um, would the wording be to approve the funding requests for Years One and Two? And to conditionally approve the funding requests for Years Three, Four, and Five with an annual review by City Council? Is that kind of what you were getting at?
Yes, I'd be willing to do the first two years.
Okay.
And then look at, look at the situation after that.
Can we, can we add, um, some sort of just, uh, expectations of fundraising goals? You know, in these first couple of years so that we can see, I mean, I guess that would be part of the subsequent years of commitment or the subsequent years of participation, but that we see uh, fundraising goals being met. Uh, you know, once again, I feel like it's kind of rushed and this is just a lot of money commitment from the city. And this is, you know, again, taxpayers' money, and I just want to be responsible about it. But just having some long-range financial, um, and organizational planning goals with fundraising goals that they can match that, you know, maybe for the second year that we can just see that commitment.
Well.
If, if, if I may comment on that. The truth in regards to fundraising for not only this children's museum, but for nonprofits in general, in particular nonprofits in Henderson County, except the landscape has completely changed. We do not know what the fundraising landscape is going to look like for the remainder of the year. I would like to think that in 2022, fundraising, um, levels are given by individuals or corporate entities returning to what they were before the pandemic. But in terms of whether it's realistic to commit to raising X number of dollars to do the outfit of the museum within a certain time, I think we still have a ways to go with the pandemic before we get a sense of what the temperature on giving is going to look like from the community as a whole. That's something that I'm very sensitive to. Um, yeah, I'm an optimist, but I'm also a realist as well. And I'd just like to just make council aware of that reality.
There's a plenty of hours.
So our hours are Tuesday through Saturday, pandemic hours, Tuesday through Saturday, um, nine o'clock AM to 12 o'clock PM. We close between 1:00 and 1:30 to do a deep, deep cleaning of the entire museum.
What were your, over in the rearview mirror?
Oh, Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 5. During the school year, during the summer, we're open from 9 to 5 with select Sundays. And Mondays, we're closed, um, because of that segment stay.
Part, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I will clarify one thing is this would, obviously, if we move forward with this commitment, there would be some type of a group formal agreement with the modification of our special appropriations, uh, contract that we have that with that, that part of that requirement is that we have the ability to, to look at the financial condition, um, the audited work, um, for Hands-on. So that's, that's part of that requirement. Also, as with any require, any contract in North Carolina with the local government, there is a non-appropriation clause. The, the city council can make the commitment, but by general statute, you cannot bind a future. Every year, you have to be able to evaluate your budget because of unknown times. And this is in any contract we have. Is that if you have to balance your budget and if the money's not there, then you're not financially obligated to pay it. If that makes, am I saying that correct, this man of attorney? Similar. So basically what I'm saying is, we will evaluate at each budget cycle. I mean, in the past, the city council has, this is not new. The city council has honored every commitment and I expect the city council, if they may tonight, will honor every commitment they've made. But I just want to clarify from a legal statute that, um, you couldn't obligate councils 10 years from now.
Right.
Because you have to, you have to be able to evaluate where you are with your budget. So just that, just want to be open and honest that there will be that non-appropriation clause in the contract. Um, just want to clarify.
Even five years from now, you can't say for sure.
Yeah.
But Joseph, your uncertainty about the fundraising, um, that actually makes me even more nervous for us to commit to this large amount of money. You know, to just kind of seed this project with this large of a chunk of money without some sort of, you know, solid capital from you guys for this project. You know, that makes me super nervous.
Dr. Hensley, I definitely understand where you're coming from for that. And I'd like to add that in regards to fundraising, in particular capital fundraising partnerships are essential. And I like to say beyond the scope of a commitment from the city for dollars, having a formalized partnership with our local government puts us in a very strong position to approach large foundations for funding for a to approach large foundations for funding for a project like this. So while the pandemic has changed the landscape of fundraising, at least for the short term, that's a fact. I am very confident that foundations who have worked with us in the past, who have the opportunity to review future grant proposals for this People's Museum, seeing that we have the support of the city, um, and a financial commitment with that, would give them confidence to support the project. Our goal for fundraising for the People's Museum will be to raise the additional funds. And I say additional, we have twenty thousand secured by the trust. It's council would approve the proposal. We would have thirty-nine thousand of seventy-eight thousand towards the project. Um, I'm confident that we'll be able to raise those additional funds just given the fact that we already have buy-in and something in the talks.
So does somebody feel comfortable coming up with some sort of an alternative motion that can support all this?
I like Barbara's, uh, for two years, or how it was modified. I'm, I'm okay with, uh, stepping up for that.
So the way I worded that, I think when I was talking to you, Mayor Volk, was, uh, we would commit to I'm sorry, Jerry Smith talking, sorry. The way I worded that was, uh, that we would, uh, commit to the first two years of funding, and then, then we would conditionally commit to years three, four, and five with council approval needed in each of those years. Which I understand what, what Mr. Connick said, which is, in other words, we always have to approve everything that we do. I, I get that. But we just, you know, make that, uh, a, an overt statement in this particular situation. So it's very clear from the get-go. So that's how I'd worded that. I think that accomplishes it.
It looks like this motion that's here would be just to direct city manager and city attorney to develop a partnership agreement. I would assume that it would have to come back to us once the agreement is drafted with all these specifics in it.
I think you could set some parameters within which we would act, and as long as we're within those parameters, we'd be authorized to sign it.
Okay.
If you wanted to, to leave it kind of wide open, it would kind of have to come back. So, the funding limits for the first two years and the conditional approval, um, and any other parameters that you would want to set for us to operate within. We can always put it back on a future agenda next, next month, um, to be ratified by city council also. But as far as approving the funding, um, I think you could do that and authorize city manager to, uh, negotiate the terms of a contract within those parameters.
Okay, so we would just have to add that verbiage to this motion.
Correct.
I'd also like to respond.
Go ahead and, and make that motion.
Yes, I would. I'd just like to respond to one thing Councilmember Hensley said, which is, if we approve this today, Joseph walks out of the door and he's got roughly forty percent of the money in pocket ready to build this thing out. I have full confidence that he'll get the other sixty percent, especially him and his, uh, very good board. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Please.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that city council direct the city manager and city attorney to develop a partnership agreement with Hands-On Children's Museum to establish the People's Museum, a cultural history of Henderson County, and a permanent home for the Walk of Fame under these conditions. The city council will agree to fund Hands-On seventy-eight thousand dollars in year one, and then in year two, thirty-six thousand dollars. And then.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
I'm, I'm sorry, they're forty-two. You're right. I'm sorry, excuse me. Forty-two. I've got lots of numbers written in front of me. Forty-two thousand dollars. And then the city council conditionally agrees to forty-two thousand dollars in years three, four, and five based upon council's approval each year.
No more than forty-two.
Okay, sure, no more than, yeah, that's fine. So wherever I said those numbers, no more than. I think that's what you need, Angie.
Okay. Are we clear on the motion?
May I ask one question? Um, on the, do we need to define that we're accepting the explanation of how the money's going to be used? We don't have to micromanage that, do we?
Oh, great point, great question. So I always wonder when it's appropriate for me to interrupt.
Always if we're getting ready to do something wrong.
There is a special statute that authorizes funding for museums. You're granted a wide latitude to do that, but you have to go about it one of two ways. You have to either in advance say what the money's going to be used for, or if you don't, the contract will have to say that all of the expenditure will be subject to see council approval. So, you know, you could do it with the, it's a more specific funding plan to come back to city council for approval after, you know, maybe at next month's meeting. If you already know, a certain portion would be for rent. You can go ahead and authorize that, but all the other expenditures would be either subject to your future approval or have to be spelled out in advance.
Well, I, I, I think we can, I think we can do that here. We, we know that thirty-nine thousand is going for the build-out of the museum initially, and then everything else is for the rent of unit one, I believe. Isn't that what the ask is, Joseph?
Yes, that, that is correct. And I also, I also like to add that, that the museum, um, you know, receives a lot of grants for different projects and whatnot. And with a, um, with a funding commitment, uh, potential like this, um, we do have the means of tracking what those capital funds are spent on, and we are happy to provide, um, any sort of reporting necessary to detail what those hard, um, construction and exhibit development costs are, um, to the, um, city manager's office and to council, if necessary.
So, um, Angie, should I amend my motion to add those things?
Uh, yes, sir, that would be great.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I would like to amend my motion. I don't know if I'd need to get approval to do that.
Yeah, I did not restate the motion, so you're, you're okay making those changes?
Okay. I'll just say in addition, in addition, thirty-nine thousand dollars of year one will go towards the build-out of the museum. Thirty-nine thousand dollars in year one will go towards rent for unit one, and the rest of all the funds will be dedicated solely to the rent of unit one.
For year two.
It's, sorry, year two, three, four, and five, yes.
Okay. All right, so the motion is, uh, for the city manager and city attorney to develop a partnership agreement with the years one and two funding committed for the, the build-out of the museum and rent. And, uh, years three, four, and five, council will review the funding each year. That summarize it? I know that wasn't the exact words, but did that summarize it well enough? We know what we're voting on.
Right, with the idea that the money is directed specifically for the build-out this year, and then all other funds are directed towards rent.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to ask before the vote, um, are there any questions about the physical space we have discussed? We can go back a previous slide, please, just to ensure we're all on the same page. Unit three, which is Hands-On proper, is the back. Unit one is everything forward from the stairs.
Yes.
So, of course, in this project, I'd like to point out that we would reconfigure our main entrance. So that way, when people come into the building to visit the People's Museum and Hands-On, there'll be a face to ensure there's level of security there, um, so that the People's Museum is preserved in addition to the rest of the museum. So I just wanted to see if there are any questions about the unit one space, um, or about the reconfigures, reconfigurations you would make to ensure that both the spaces are combined together, because ultimately the coffee shop space above is going to be independent of the museum space.
Yes. Okay. Madam Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
So the motion is that the intent of the city council to actually authorize them, yourself to sign that once it's developed, so you're actually approving, approving it as well? As, as stated, it's to develop a partnership agreement? Uh, we could change it to, um, enter? Okay.
Madam Mayor, may I, uh, amend my motion once again and make that enter into a partnership? The verbs are important.
So to enter the partnership agreement, all right. Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? If not, we will go ahead. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mayor Volk also votes aye. So the motion passes, and, uh, we will ask you to work with, uh, Mr. Connick and the speaker and, uh, move forward.
May I say one thing before we get up? Want to apologize to people that sent emails, and I had some, I, my city account, it's my fault. I did something weird on my phone. And I didn't see them until I got dumped a bunch today, so I didn't answer them. It's not that I'm rude, it's just that I'm technically stupid at the time, so I apologize for people that I did not get back to.
Okay, all right.
To just thank the city council for, for your vision of a future of this community that involves having a robust history museum and children's museum experience. The children who we serve and the adults who we serve, citizens ultimately are going to love what we're going to build at three-one-eight North Main. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you, working together.
Okay, um, I'm thinking, do we need to take a break for a few minutes?
This is Jerry Smith, yes.
All right. Let's take about a five-minute break, yeah.
Okay. Mayor Volk, I'm here and ready whenever you are.
Not yet. We'll wait, probably.
Sorry, Mayor, we were muted. I just unmuted us.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
He is back, all right. Now, let's, yes, it's been about five minutes, so we're doing okay. Next item is the Hendo Half Marathon. Who's going to start on this one?
I'm gonna let, uh, Councilmember Hensley.
So for years and years, uh, you know, I'm big and slow, so my half marathon times are not setting records. And so the thought of running downhill is much better to me than running uphill. And so I wanted to have like the fastest half marathon in North Carolina. And because we have a really awesome place, which is at Jump Off Rock. So we got ahold of Daphne Kirkwood at iDaff events. She throws many, many events. She's done several triathlons here. She hosts the Tour to Apple, which is the yearly big bike ride from the community college. And anyway, she's wonderful to partner with. She's been working with the town of Laurel Park. And because a good portion of the half marathon is going to be in their city. They have jumped on board and have been very positive. So just some rundowns. It is actually called the Jump Off Rock Half Marathon. It would be Saturday, May 8th, 7:30 a.m. start time with waves. Throwing really amazing safe events since COVID, since, gosh, I think she started back up doing events maybe in May or June. Kind of with like rolling starts, that kind of thing. Racers will be shuttled to Jump Off Rock. It is not a total steep decline downward. They have a route that they're working that kind of loops around back in through Laurel Park. But the best part is, is it finishes on our main street. And so the YMCA will be a charity partner. There will be a run around through the YMCA parking lot with water stations and cheering stations. They are also offering financial assistance for folks registering for the race. They're also looking at adding a shorter distance, possibly a 10K for folks who do not want to commit to the full 13 miles. And I just think with a lot of, myself included, since the pandemic, I have not been as physically active as I would have liked to have been. And I just think this is a good positive way to start out the new year, a training goal for people, a way to get people visiting Hendersonville and working with our neighbors. There will be minimal, I guess, commitment from the city, other than just some road closures and some assistance with that. John can kind of add in the details for that. But I would really like the council's support and help us with this project. Race.
Any estimate of how many people you would be able to handle?
Um, we're expecting three to 500 participants the first year. I don't remember exactly how many participants there were for the Tour to Apple. Several hundred in that one as well. And we did, she did a rolling race start with that one. And so, I mean, I'm hoping that things are improved with vaccine rollout and that kind of thing by May. But you know, there are mask requirements that start, mask requirements on the shuttle. And so with the rolling start, wave starts, and those wave starts are over an hour or two, they should be able to sufficiently kind of break the crowds up.
What, what is it you need from the city, from the city council?
So Mayor, if I may, just, again, we would go through our special event process, but Daphne Kirman needed to know that if we would, if the city's willing to be, and all I'll need is a nod of the head, basically a consensus from the city council, because you'll ultimately approve it in the future, is that we would be an events sponsor, which basically means that we, our public works and law enforcement, possibly fire, to provide in-kind services during the day of the event, basically for traffic control, barricades, those kind of things. That would be, we would, it'd be at no cost. Our, our cost, our commitment would be providing that at no cost to the, to the marathon inside the corporate limits of Hendersonville. Anything in Laurel Park would be the responsibility of the town of Laurel Park. So we'd be jointly as co-sponsors of the event with the town of Laurel Park. And obviously, there'll be other sponsors too. Just so, just general, before we got into a lot of planning, just wanted to make sure city council was, would support that going forward, so that we could begin registration and advertising.
Anyone have objections?
I, I just like to ask a question, Jerry Smith.
Yep.
Where would the finish line be? So have you, have you thought about where it would be on, and this is, I'm asking Councilmember Hensley, have you thought about where it would be on Main Street?
No, I don't know. So she was working out the race course itself. And I know that Laurel Park has got copies of the map right now that they're kind of working on, just to make sure. I know there are some traffic constraints and depending on which of the avenues we would kind of come down through Laurel Park. I think that's kind of where it would depend. But if you're, if you have thoughts or ideas on exactly where it would end, I'm happy to pass that along to Daphne. She's been really awesome to work with. And if you guys have ideas specifically, then she's been very flexible and happy to work with us.
Sure. I just was, just kind of wondering, just kind of, since I think the downtown's going to be closed, or at least Main Street that day, you could potentially run the last mile-ish all on Main Street. So that's pretty cool.
We have discussed something very similar to that. So, yeah.
Are we good with closing Main Street for that? Could it coincide with where we're not closed? When, when would it be again, Jen?
Um, so the date is Saturday, May 8th.
I, I, so maybe we could work it in conjunction with downtown being closed. But I wonder how you're going to get staggered group across Church Street. Worries me a little bit.
So Jeff, there's
You guys figure that out.
There's a three and a half hour time limit on the race. So with a staggered start, if there was a 9:30 at the latest start of the race, then the last runner would have to be coming through by one o'clock.
I'll also add that Church Street would be the end of the run and they will be staggered by the time you get to the end.
So, and, and let me add one thing about Jeff's question about, so this year, we closed Main Street and, and the downtown committee's still talking about this, close Main Street the first Saturday of every month. And we, and we've met with our special event committee just to talk to this. One of the things that the downtown group is thinking about is for this year, we would be the sec, second Saturday of each month is, is when they would do the open streets concept, which would fall on May 8th. And this may likely be the first of those street closures. So
Well, there you go.
So we, we're trying to think through that and work with, with our downtown folks to be consistent. So we don't, we lessen our impact of our, on the downtown merchants.
Right.
I would also like to mention that the goal of iDaff events is also to partner with local hotels and, excuse me, B and Bs, so that folks can stay overnight as well. And so, you know, the goal that I would see for this is that it would become a yearly event in Hendersonville and, you know, continue to draw runners and racers and, you know, people also to visit our amazing town.
Madam Mayor, well, Mayor Volk, I have another question. Jerry Smith again. And that is, so obviously, as we look forward over the next few months, we hope things are going to get better very strongly. If, if for some reason, we have an executive order that would prohibit this, that meaning from the governor, I'm assuming council would agree that we would not hold it if we had an executive order that for some reason would prohibit that.
Yeah. And I'll tell you that, I, I can't remember when, John, you'll have to remind me of the Hendersonville triathlon that she did. And there were some executive orders during that time. And she, everything that she did coincided with the governor's orders. She is a very big rule follower, Daphne is. So if there was anything about the race or the setup of the race that didn't coincide with any executive orders, she would, she would not have the event.
Awesome.
So there appears to be no objection. You have some comments to bring back to the planning group? And
Anybody gonna sign up with me?
If I could walk the whole way, but that would take me until about seven o'clock at night. So.
We can come watch you.
Well, Jennifer, can I ask a question? That is, so what's the earliest start?
7:30 a.m.
Right. So in other words, if you were walking it, you could start at 7:30 and if you're done by one, you're good, right?
So, well, I think so. I guess some races that I've done, they have a, what they call a sweeper, who, you never want to be that person, by the way, who gets picked up by a bus because you've
Thinking from experienced, Jen.
I don't know. I told you I was slow. I, I don't think Daphne does that kind of thing with events. So Jeff, or Jerry, yes, you, I think you could potentially walk the event. And actually, three hours, three and a half hours is just a little bit over a 15-minute mile pace. And so there are a lot of walkers who walk half marathons with kind of a speedwalking pace. I know the Disney half is a three and a half hour limit and there were lots of walkers as well.
Yeah, that's, I with, I made my orthopedist a promise that I would not run on concrete anymore after I got my new hips. But I definitely would like to walk it. So
Bring you out of retirement.
Well, but if there's, if there's a potential way to walk it, I'm in. So I'd like to give it a go.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, Hendersonville Kiwanis 100th Anniversary Legacy Project presentation. Who is going to be doing that for us?
Is Lee, is Lee?
Oh, okay. I had not seen her, so.
So we understand that the pandemic has brought to light the need for more family and outdoor spacing. We also understand that there is a community desire for splash pad area similar to what we are proposing tonight. The proposed splash pad aligns with the Kiwanis mission to support children and youth in Henderson County. The layout serves all abilities and ages. I myself might even be interested in getting wet there. We are also working with recommended and approved Kiwanis design partners. Councilmember Lindsey Simpson also serves as the Kiwanis fundraising chair. And she can fill in additional details on the project specifics and any design questions that you might have. The Kiwanis Board has vetted the early stages of this project and has showed initial and shared initial information with the Kiwanis membership as well. This project could be viewed very similar to a past partnership that the city of Hendersonville undertook to develop the Hendersonville Skate Park that is currently in existence at Patton Park. The commitment from the Kiwanis Club of Hendersonville would be to utilize the Kiwanis Foundation 501(c)(3) to collect and hold project donations, because that is a 501(c)(3), those could be charitable donations as well. We would fundraise as Kiwanians for $100,000 needed to make the project a reality. The Kiwanis Club would also assist with landscaping and beautification of the site and other needs as requested. As far as a timeline, we are looking at hopefully 12 months, because this is our centennial year, the 100th celebration. However, with the pandemic and other challenges that could possibly hamper fundraising, we may look more at an 18 to 24 month timeframe for project completion. But Kiwanians are about working together, doing things for community. So our goal is the 12 months. But we did want to give some wiggle room in there if needed. What we are asking the city of Hendersonville to do is to partner with us to make this project a reality for our community. Remember, as I said earlier, kids need Kiwanis. And today, Kiwanis needs the support and partnership of the city of Hendersonville. We also would request the city of Hendersonville to help us identify an existing park space or other appropriate space with amenities that include a bathroom, ease of access, and parking to permanently house this project. We would also love the support of the city of Hendersonville's Public Works Department in working with our identified design partner to properly prepare and install the project for, for use by our community. We would also ask for permission to add signage, naming the area the Kiwanis Splash Pad or whatever other appropriate name we, we come up with. If desired, we could also reflect our partnership with the city of Hendersonville. And we would like permission to add sponsor names and logos for those organizations, businesses, individuals who significantly support the project, because part of the Kiwanis fundraising plan is to go out not only to our membership, which is 102 strong currently, but to ask area businesses and philanthropic parties to help us make this a reality in the community. I want to thank you for your time and consideration. Certainly, myself or Lindsey would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think in your packet, there is a proposed project budget that is outlining the expenditure of the $100,000. And then there are some schematics of the splash pad itself. So we would certainly appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Questions? Honors?
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
Jerry Smith here again. So I just would like to say that as the Key Club Advisor at Hendersonville High School, I am hoping that you will make part of this project available for Key Club volunteer hours.
We would certainly welcome all Key Club, Builders Club, any of our partner groups in the Kiwanis family to come out and, and make this project a reality.
So I, I've just offered the support of the Key Club and the Kiwanis at Hendersonville High School towards making this happen, both with, you know, sweat equity and with fundraising dollars. We're ready to get started.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
My comment is, you guys have heard nonstop from me since I got sworn into this council board that I was begging for a splash pad. So this is like dream come true.
Splash pad is something people have talked about for years. And this spring, before we masked up, I was walking with a friend and we met one of her neighbors, fellow who was there with his two little kids. And when she introduced me as the mayor, he had said, oh, you know what we need in this town? We need a splash pad. And I will help raise the money for it. So if you want his name, I will get his name to you and he will help with the fundraising.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. We'll take all the fundraising help we can get.
So, Madam Mayor, I think all we need is just consensus to get the Kiwanis Club to move forward with fundraising and then we'll work with them to identify some potential locations on city parks. And I've had a conversation And I've had a conversation, um, Councilmember Simpson and I have had a conversation with Tom Wooton, and he feels like that his staff could assist in constructing of, um, of this, of the pad itself and installing some of the components that will help keep the costs, um, at a reasonable point, so just make that clear.
If anyone has any objections to it, uh, please state that now. If not, okay, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support and look forward to a splash pad.
All right, uh, gun safety program. Who is, uh?
The police chief, or interim police.
Good evening. Got a few handouts here for everybody. Hold that mic is dead. Is this one okay? Okay, perfect. I appreciate the opportunity to, to come tonight and talk about a, a program that we're implementing through the police department. It's a gun firearm safety program, uh, for the community. Uh, August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty, ironically, was my first day here in Hendersonville. A, a ten-year-old boy gained access to a gun in the home and shot and killed himself. Uh, three months later, November the twenty-fourth, an eleven-year-old boy gained access to his father's handgun in the house, took it to the Hendersonville Middle School and shot a classmate. Uh, had a conversation shortly before that with, uh, Councilwoman Hensley about providing some type of gun safety in our community, and we began researching different programs uh, throughout the country as far as what people were doing to provide gun safety, not only to kids, but the problem that we were seeing here in the community was adults not safeguarding firearms in the home so that kids, young people could have access to those firearms. After looking at and talking to a number of people on different programs, we elected to, uh, really research further the Project Child Safe. It's a, uh, a project that's been funded and, uh, supported by the National Shooting Sports Foundation. Uh, after we looked at it, it's got resources, uh, for not only, again, for children and kids involved in firearms, but specifically the parents for, for, uh, safeguarding and protecting those firearms in the home. So things that we, we've developed some training criteria, some educational material in several different areas, and those areas are in those packets that I showed you. First is firearms responsibility in the home, uh, rules for safe storage of firearms, and with those rules, also, we talk about North Carolina law and how that affects, uh, you as a citizen in, in protecting and safeguarding your firearm in the home. There are, uh, there are rules, there are laws, statutes in North Carolina on how we store and protect firearms when we have children in the home. So we do talk about the laws here in the state, different storage options. There's different things between gun safes, gun lockers, uh, firearms cases, how you can secure those, even what I just passed out, the cable locks, the gun locks. Um, we started researching. I'll talk a little bit more about those, those locks themselves. Um, firearms kept for home safety, what is best for you and your family? If you say, "I want to keep a gun, I want a gun in my home," we're going to talk to you about what gun is best for home protection. Uh, it may not be that semi-automatic AR-15 that's very popular right now. Uh, deterring access by at-risk persons, what does that mean? What is an at-risk? We know our kids or you are at risk, but what if there's people with mental illness, substance abuse issues, uh, tendency toward violence, they've shown propensity toward violence in the past? Uh, maybe that gun lock right there, that cable lock, maybe that's not the best option for you, because if an adult with a mental health issue or substance abuse issue, a propensity for violence issue, has a pair of bolt cutters and gains access to that firearm, they can make that firearm very easily accessible and, and usable in the community. So we've got better options for you as far as gun safes and things, or if you've got, uh, gun lockers that can't be moved, we'll bolt them to the floor, that type of thing. Uh, safe home checklist, safety tips. We'll talk about a firearm responsibility contract for the kids in your home, where you actually have a contract between you and your children about the use of firearms. Uh, and we've got some great videos that are very appealing to kids. Uh, we've worked with Allison Justice. If you go to the city of Hendersonville, uh, website, and I understand it'll be on the Hendersonville TD's website, um, there are, there are links to these videos that you can actually show and, and, and talk to your kids about them at home. We're going to create our own videos. Those are already projects out, child safe videos that have been created. We're going to create our own and do smaller versions, shorter versions on our Facebook page. And again, Allison's been very good about working on them with this. If it wasn't for her, we'd, uh, we'd be in the dark back there trying to film a video. She's very good at her job, so. The next step we looked at was how do we get this information out there? In the days, age of COVID, um, and indoor meeting space, that type of thing, these indoor presentations being very limited, we wanted to do, do these presentations through PTO meetings. Well, there are no PTO meetings right now. Um, very hard to get into classroom right now, as you can imagine, with the video. Uh, well, now there's, it's all back to video, or the, the, uh, yeah, video teaching, I guess, uh, virtual teaching. So how are we going to get this information out there? You know, we, we've talked about our website, we've talked about our Facebook page, but what we're going to do now is we're going to do a drive-through safety event. So right here in the parking lot of City Hall, the first one is going to be January the sixteenth. Uh, that's a Saturday. We haven't looked at the times yet or determined the times yet, but probably something from like ten in the morning until three or four in the afternoon, people will be able to drive through into the parking lot here at City Hall, and we'll be able to talk with individuals, be able to give them the literature, the brochures, the pamphlets. We'll also be able to give them free gun locks, and those are the locks that you have in front of you. Uh, when we started researching this, um, I, we started calling gun manufacturers. The, the manufacturer that, that, uh, that makes the guns that we carry, Glock Firearms, they sent us several hundred free gun locks. We said that we put in for, uh, grants through Project Child Safe, other opportunities out there. Right now, we've got about seven hundred of these at the police department. We hope to give away every single one of them, because these same individuals have said, "When you need more, come back to us." So we do have access to a free resource that we plan on giving out to the, to the community itself. Um, we hope to hold these drive-through gun safety events monthly until we're able to meet in person again. So we'll be continuing those as a project through the police department. We've got four officers that have worked together to come up with the, the education curriculum and guidelines that, uh, they'll be, they'll be the officers that are in charge of this program, and they'll continue this thing on until, uh, into the, into the future. We don't per- perceive it stopping. The drive-through events may stop, but when they do, we'll be back in the school, back in the PTOs, back in civic organizations, whoever wants to, uh, or would be able to hear us. So that's basically it, unless, Mr. Connor, you have something else to add.
No, I just, I appreciate the work of, of Chief Hollingshead and in, in the department. It's, uh, something, again, that Councilmember Hensley brought to us, and, and I asked the chief to look into it, and they've done an excellent job, so really wanted to roll it out today, um, so that he could announce and then get moving on the January sixteen date and just make sure the public is aware of it, um, and, uh, and the council's aware of it. So I don't know if Councilmember Hensley has anything she wants to add.
Um, I just, after the, um, the child suicide that we had, who's ten years old, you know, I just thought about how the fact that my daughter is ten and it just, like, rocked my world. Um, and I feel like the gun locks especially, just having, um, you know, if you have an impulsive act, having that one additional protective shield in your home could be, you know, beneficial and save a life. And I'm just really grateful that, um, you guys have done all this work and legwork to get these gun locks donated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate, uh, the suggestion from Councilmember Hensley and Chief in the Department for pulling it all together.
Okay.
Thank you.
We invite you out on the sixteenth. See you there. Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, next is the presentation on expanded outdoor dining structures pilot project.
Madam Mayor, Mayor of the City Council, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Jamie Carpenter, um, our downtown manager.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me come here tonight and present on our outdoor dining structures, uh, pilot proposal. This, um, project came about from the, uh, expanding of businesses outdoors for, uh, COVID restrictions. And so our businesses have been real creative, as you all know, and innovative during this whole year. And, uh, this is a really cool project that came about from it. Um, if you can go to the next slide. So this project, as you know, came about in May. Um, we offered businesses the opportunities downtown to expand on sidewalk or in thirty-minute parking spaces on the street if they're available. And, um, we had two businesses that took us up on expanding into the parking spaces, and that was Aqua Waha Brewing and Hannah Flanagan's. During that time, they found a lot of really great success in expanding into those spaces just with the makeshift ways that they've done it. In the meantime, in September, the North Carolina Main Street Program offered a partnership with the UNC Greensboro Architecture Program to have students who are Main Street Fellows, um, create renderings for COVID response projects. So it was a really great timing to work with them on this project with Aqua Waha Brewing. Um, so then from September through December, we worked with Aqua Waha, UNC Greensboro, and a variety of volunteer contractors and public works to, to determine some feasibility on some more semi-permanent structures. Uh, the next slide, please. So this is what it currently looks like at Aqua Waha and Hannah Flanagan's, or from earlier this year. Uh, this is the makeshift outdoor dining expansions that they currently have. Uh, next slide, please. And this is a proposal, uh, that was created by the UNC Greensboro students. Uh, this is, uh, just a rendering of what it may be able to look like, just to get an idea on the street slope and level, um, and some of the seating, so that way it could be handicap accessible or ADA accessible. We don't recommend necessarily using the more permanent umbrellas like is used there, just so that way there's some more flexibility, uh, during the wintertime for heated outdoor dining. Uh, next slide, please. And so this is a, a better idea of how it may be able to look on the street, uh, just an example of, of how it would lay out potentially. The next slide. So what we'd like to do, um, and Aqua Waha Brewing and Hannah Flanagan's have asked our help with is to pilot an outdoor dining policy or proposal to, um, use this as an opportunity to see if these expanded outdoor dining structures would be interested, an interest for businesses going forward. Aqua Waha and Hannah's are already ready to proceed at this point, and so they're also willing to work with our community development staff, Public Works, and our downtown advisory committee to work with us on design parameters, appearance, stormwater, traffic flow, et cetera. What we'd like to do is use this as a six-month period just for these two businesses to pilot this, so that way we can work on the outdoor dining policy to make sure that we figure out all of the logistics that would be required of it, any additional rules or regulations that would be needed, so that way there's not, um, any of these structures placed all throughout downtown without any rules. Uh, next slide, please. Some of the constraints that, um, the businesses will need to figure out with us together are, um, easy removal of the structure. For example, if a water line were to break, they would need to be able to access the water line within twenty-four hours. And so the structures would need to be built in a way that are durable but can be removed in the instance that they would need to be. Also, turning radius into the alley, uh, in Aqua Waha Brewing's example in particular, uh, just traffic flow in general, snow removal that we might see some examples of tomorrow, maybe. Um, but how the businesses will need to address snow removal because snow plows will be unable to work around those structures. Also cleanliness and, uh, working with our staff throughout the project so we can work on developing a more in-depth policy for this going forward. Um, also, obviously, they'll have to work with Public Works and through us to make sure that whatever is built is something that is able to be, um, to facilitate the use of Public Works, um, and then the building permits and inspections. The next slide, please. So this project is no cost to the city, um, no financial cost, because the businesses are interested and willing to make a financial investment in building a structure like this. They see the value, or they've seen the value this past year of having additional outdoor dining. Um, in the case of Aqua Waha Brewing, they did not have any outdoor dining, and Hannah Flanagan's had limited outdoor dining, and they both see the value in going forward with that. Um, the downtown program has just provided the in-kind design services through our Main Street Program with North Carolina Main Street, and we have the opportunity to provide our pivot grants through the Friends of Downtown Hendersonville nonprofit to help with some of the costs, which are just small micro grants that were developed this year through the sale of our Love Hendo masks, um, up to a thousand dollars. The businesses would always be expected to maintain their sidewalk dining permit, uh, which would, currently, the fee is fifty cents per square foot, and that's something that will need to be evaluated throughout the process of figuring out the policy, um, during this pilot project. Um, so that's an overview of what we'd like to do, essentially, is working with these two businesses to use this for a pilot, um, to determine the feasibility, if it's something we'd like to do going forward. And that is, um, an overview of the project. I'd love to answer any questions or comments.
Questions? Or comments?
Mayor Bog, I have a question for Ms. Beaker, which I'll hold and wait if, if other questions want to ask Jenny right now, but I'd like to ask, ask her a question. Shall I go ahead?
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Jerry Smith here. Um, so, um, is there, for insurance purposes, either the city, I'm not still the city, but for, I'll use Hannah's as an example. Um, do we need to designate these areas as like the sidewalk or something? Are there any legality issues, because technically it is the street that may come into play by allowing this?
I'd have to think that through, um, and I would want to talk to our insurance carrier about that. Um, and so the answer is, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Get back with you on that.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly, okay, yeah, I'm certainly in favor of this. I just wonder, because technically it is in a street, if there's some other issues that may come up after somebody gets hurt.
Sure, regarding any structure that they build and they've been in place, that should be their responsibility as far as our exposure in allowing it to be placed in the street, I'm just...
And, and I think we'd need to look at it as it relates to our di- outside dining permits, that there may be some language in those dining permits, because I assume we would, this would fall under, because we're already allowing seating on the sidewalk, so I don't know if there's any coverage. I mean, we would just have to look at it.
Right, I, I've not reviewed anything in that regard.
Except, well, I don't know if we need to technically designate these areas as sidewalk for purposes of this pro- this, uh, trial run. That's why I was asking that.
Jamie, are these going to be in the street? They'll still be in the street, right? We're not going to, or is sidewalk going to be constructed?
It, it is on the street, or in the, in Hannah's case, it's in the thirty-minute parking spaces, and in Aqua Waha, it's more in a loading zone, um, and it would more create a level, um, walk off, off the street rather than stepping off down the curb.
We can look into it, but look... We can look into it, but Lu says currently under the sidewalk dining, um we, that we're listed as an additional insured
On their policy.
On their policy.
Okay, just something to think about.
Is is that issue something that would stop us from approving this this evening?
I I think we could, well, work out the details. I mean, obviously, and I'm looking at City Attorney, um I think we could uh, because they would ultimately have to expand their sidewalk dining permitting. Maybe do some research to to keep moving forward. Maybe you could direct us to investigate that matter and proceed, because uh previously, you expanded in the my authority um and the consent agenda to um to utilize um sidewalk in public downtown parking spaces. It's something we had done as far as the COVID. Um and I think that we're extending that for six months. That would cover um the pilot period till the policies develop. So I think you've granted me the authority to um allow this to happen pending we work out the insurance details.
So you don't feel we need a motion this evening?
How do you want to?
Because there is a res- a resolution in the agenda packet.
That's what I was getting ready to say, Madam Mayor, is that there is an agenda, I mean, a resolution in there. And it's really just asking for permission to develop the program and bring it back. Pilot projects will be reviewed and presented with uh within six months from the date here in.
What what's the implementation timeframe? I'm sorry if I missed that, Jane.
Um the the businesses would be ready to, they would like to do the construction fairly soon. Um so they, it would, the six months would include the implementation or the construction.
So they would, people would be di- I'm I'm sorry, I'm still unclear. People would be dining before six months or after six months?
Before, within. And e- essentially, on the places that they are, it just would be a a built environment rather than the barricades.
So if you want to do it by motion, then I would say grant the permission to develop the project su- subject to complying with the recommendations of um City Attorney regarding liability and insurance.
Can you repeat that again?
There there is a suggested motion in the agenda packet that says, "I move the City Council approve the resolution to pilot expanded outdoor dining projects in the downtown district as presented."
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not on mine, so that's why.
It's not on, it's not on the uh
And that's, and that's
Printed agenda, but it is in the agenda packet.
I'm happy to make a motion and add on to Ms. Speaker's uh addendum.
That subject to um working with the City Attorney to protect the city from a liability and insurance standpoint.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council approve the resolution to pilot expanded outdoor dining projects in the downtown district um in addendum to the consultation with the City Attorney to protect City of Hendersonville from liability issues.
Okay, that cover it? All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the resolution uh with the uh with the consultation with the City Attorney? Right, uh Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Uh Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And uh Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. All right, we'll move ahead with that.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh next, resolution to purchase property located at six, six twenty-two Pace Street.
Madam Mayor, Mayor of City Council, um city staff is proposing the resolution to authorize us to purchase the property located at six twenty-two Pace Street. This property in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. This property is located directly behind uh the new police headquarters. Uh it currently is a location of illegal activities. Also would help us resolve a drainage issue associated with the new headquarters and this property. And the tax value was roughly eighty thousand dollars. Uh we have met with the the current property owners, which are four heirs of Mr. Jones, who are willing to sell the property for a hundred thousand dollars. We think this price is is um fair. It's um consistent with other property we've purchased there. It is close to fair market value. Um and then the property would ultimately um be held for either um construction of a new home or utilized for some other city use um going forward that would benefit the neighborhood. So we ask you to um approve the attached resolution um to enter into a contract for the purchase of six twenty-two East Pace for a hundred thousand dollars.
Need questions or discussion? Not a mo- motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the attached resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of six two-two East Pace Street property for one hundred thousand dollars.
Is there any discussion? If not, we will vote. Uh Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor also votes aye. Okay, uh then we have the item from the consent agenda that was moved over, and that was the meeting schedule. Uh Mr. Smith, what did you uh wish to discuss about this?
Yeah, so what I wanted to at least talk about tonight is uh certainly based upon where we are right now in the pandemic, um and with the rollout of the vaccine, is whether or not council would consider doing our meeting on the twenty-seventh of January virtually. And well, obviously, the twenty-seventh and February the fourth, um doing that meeting completely virtually. Um not knowing exactly where we'll be at that time, but knowing that it's probably not gonna get a lot better in the next month. And the only reason I pulled that off the agenda was that is discussion of meetings, so I just figured that was the best way to do that. So that we would put that in our packet, that those two meetings would be virtually.
Could we get some input from our City Attorney? Um so if the City Council wishes to do that, best practice is to go ahead and change your regular schedule of meetings to say that definitely. Um we have drafted this notice to provide flexibility. There's not a case law. It's all subject to interpretation on maneuvering through this COVID um time that we have. Uh as I said, we've tried to build flexibility, and so for this evening's meeting, uh Ms. Reese and I uh talked, and when we, when we wrote this, we tried to build in so that if a City Council member were going to participate remotely, that we would give a special notice. We tried to put in flexibility that they would either be at City Hall or, due to COVID, um be conducted electronically. But as I said, best practice is if you know now that you want to do those two meetings completely remotely, that best practice would be to go ahead and put that in this notice that we would um re-advertise.
Do we have, I mean, I would still, I still like coming here. And if we have the spacing that we need and the screens up, I'd still like the option to come here. If we don't change anything, and we just make sure that if Councilman Smith doesn't want to come, or somebody else doesn't want to act, you know, actually be here, that they just give forty-eight hours notice that they don't want to be here. Does that still work for us?
Well, um so the definition of a remote meeting already is, under statute, one or more participating remotely. So if one person is going to not be here, it turns it into a remote meeting. So if we know in advance, best practice, that uh that one or more members aren't going to be here in person, we would put that in the, go ahead and put that in the notice, and that would not preclude you from coming. It's still a remote meeting.
It still works, right?
Yes, it's still a remote meeting. As far as the forty-eight hours, you voted this evening to do away with that.
Do away, that's right. So but as long as we, you know, have somebody, if somebody's not gonna be here, we know it's, it's a remote meeting now. And those of us that would like to come could have the setup, and if someone doesn't, they can zoom, whatever, from wherever they want to be.
Correct. As long as the state of emergency is in place, I think that would be fine.
I don't think that's going anywhere.
And just, just to remind you, the the biggest impact is on the vote of some of your planning issues. Uh you would have to wait twenty-four hours after the public hearing to take a vote. So our planning issues, that's part of the state law, is that on your planning issues, if we do it virtually next month, we would need to come back twenty-four hours, or after twenty-four hours, to whether that's the next day or the next week or whatever, to to take a vote. So if you do it by virtually, um it's just what the state law says. They just, they put that caveat in there that you can, you do it virtually, you have to give the public twenty-four hours to make comments before you can vote.
I I think m- my reason for saying that is it would allow staff to not have to be there. So um because right now, somebody has to run this camera, and uh if we were all virtually, it would be just a Zoom. Um and um, you know, it would, it would, it would take the pressure off of staff of having to be there as well, um as well as that room that's out there where people are waiting in to come and speak and all those things. Um but but I definitely will go ahead and s- I would like to go ahead and say um that for the twenty-seventh and the fourth, um absent some, some major changes, that um I will go ahead and commit to saying that's gonna be remote. I guess I can still show up. And uh let me ask you a question, uh Mr. Connet, and that is, so let's say we advertise it as remote, but we all came anyway. You still gotta wait twenty-four hours to do that voting on a planning issue, right?
So that's why I prefer, in a way, I prefer, if you know, to have the flexibility. In other words, it's advertised as in-person with notice that it could be converted to remote and special notice would be given, so uh
Okay, so
It's h- it's hard to maneuver in these times. It it just is, because technically, if all members were present, it would not be a remote meeting. But if it were advertised as a remote meeting, then that's telling the public, you're gonna have twenty-four hours to comment, so, for public hearings, so. Bottom line, I guess my recommendation would be to leave it the way it is, and as as drafted, because you can still, if one person isn't gonna come, we would need to know um in time to do the special meeting notice, which is forty-eight hours, so, sorry, I'm sitting here thinking out loud. Um you do have to give this notice, if if one person isn't gonna participate and it's gonna be remote, then we would have to give that notice forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, or else everybody would have to come here. So for tonight's meeting, we knew that um Councilmember Smith wasn't gonna be here, so we already advertised it. We advertised the notice of remote participation on Monday. Monday? Monday, or Tuesday, Tuesday. Anyway, it was forty-eight hours in advance. Um
Okay, well, if if there's no concern for, you know, not having to have the waiting room and all that, I just wanted to bring that issue. So I guess, so I'm clear, because I'm probably the one that's gonna be doing this in January and maybe February, I don't know. Um as long as there's forty-eight hours or more notice, that's all that's needed. And then we know that if there's a planning issue, which I guess means conditional zoning, that that vote could not happen at the meeting. It would have to happen twenty-four hours later. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a comment about this. Um so leading up to this meeting, I think sometime, I, I would be in favor of both the two meetings that were suggested being fully remote, for the reasons that Jerry stated, and also for folks that are concerned about coming and giving comments, and they feel, I've heard from several people, that if they do their comment virtually, and some people are here in person, that the person's comments in person mean more than the person on the video, which we all know, not to be true, we listen to everybody equally. But I think it would relieve some pressure of presenters and community members, and even council members, weighing the odds of, do I want to put myself in a room? We're taking lots of safety precautions, but that doesn't, that's not as safe as me being in my home. So I feel like with the way the pandemic is going and the fact that we are having this conversation, that I would be in favor of the meetings being fully remote, so that the community is still encouraged to participate and can see that, you know, we're trying to move the people's business along, but we're gonna do it in the safest way possible. Plus, people are looking to us to set the example, and I think the best example right now is for us to be as safe as we possibly can, and we have the technology to do that.
And and I will say, just, it's, as that there's some question we would need to look into if we have to provide opportunity for the public, if they don't have a computer um to be able to participate, whether there's some, I don't know, we have to look in.
You read my email. Yeah, I've interpreted it that way. I put that in the email that went out today that, not to be able to comment, to but, but to be able to listen.
Yeah.
You have to provide an op- a a physical location where folks can come to listen. May- nobody may show up, but you've got to at least provide the opportunity.
So at least some of the staff
Physical locations.
That some of the staff would have to be here regardless to man that room and to assist any public that wanted to come that didn't have access at home, so.
I'm confused, because I feel like we've already been kind of doing this, right? The people that didn't feel comfortable coming could stay and do remote, and the people who felt comfortable coming could come and do the in-person stuff?
Yes, I'm just trying to avoid staff having to come, uh as well as those people sitting out there in that waiting room that were there, though apparently that has to happen regardless. Um and it's also the worst time of the pandemic right now.
So those people that came to give their input in person didn't have to, they chose to. You know, they have the opportunity to um
Honestly, they don't have the setup to do it for, you know, for some reason.
Right.
But we have a phone dial-in number too, right? Where people can actually dial in on the phone?
Yes.
But then again, you have to work the option buttons and all of that on it. It's not, you know, some of you guys are real technical savvy people, but there's some of us that aren't. I do not want, it sounds kind of like I'm the heavy here, you know, I'm trying to put staff in danger. I'm not doing that. If, John, you come to us as a city manager and say, staff is in a position that they're worried about this, then I'm gonna do whatever you suggest. Uh I don't want to put anybody in danger, but I also don't want to short public opportunity to voice what they want to voice in a safe environment, and I commend you for doing it. But as far as going fully virtual, you know, that's something that I will look to you to direct us on for my two cents.
Thank you, dear. Um I I think, I mean, we we haven't discussed it, um and I don't want to speak for staff because we haven't discussed it, but I I think um at this point, um by the measures we're taking, we feel okay, and I'm kind of looking around. Um I think, I think we feel okay as long as we continue the measures here, and I think if we do like the, the current policy allows is that if a council member or anybody chooses not to, they don't feel safe, that they could participate via Zoom, let us know so that we can do the special notification. Um going forward, since we're in this setting, um I've basically directed city staff to participate by, by a Zoom i- if all possible. Um unless we have to, some of us ha- will have to be here, obviously, but um for most of the staff, they'll participate via Zoom, um because of just the setting, because it's, it's a small room and and we feel like it's better protected that way, so. So
if there are just three total, the mayor and two council members, if, if you guys are wanting to do it from home, we could even stretch it out more. And I love the fact that staff can, can zoom in on it. We'll keep it as thin as we can until you find that it's not a comfortable thing and then you tell us. We punked.
I agree.
I, I'm fine with that. I, I just would like to request that if we're going to do that, we wear masks to the meeting.
So council needs to vote on this because it is a change. It changed the location from City Ops to here. And then it also adds the language about potentially being electronic. So the motion that was under the consent agenda is still valid as it is written? Or do we need to amend that as it is written as fine? It needs to be as presented. I move city council adopt the 2021 annual meeting schedule as presented.
So we're not making any amendments to it, just as we have it right now.
Correct.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion?
So we're not changing anything right now, right?
Well, you're changing the location from City Ops to here.
Right, but.
And then it'll be in person with potentially one or more members participating remotely, just, just like tonight.
Okay.
And we would ask that the first person that decides to participate remotely, we need the 48-hour notice. Once the notice has been given, everybody else could decide last minute they're going to stay home. But we just have to have for the first person that decides that 48-hour notice.
Madam Mayor, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that city council adopt the 2021 annual meeting schedule as presented in our meeting this evening.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the schedule, say aye or nope, sorry, got to go through this. Ms. Simpson, aye. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hensley.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. Okay, thank you. Appointments to boards, commissions, committees, we do have a long list. A few got, a few got postponed, but we still have quite a few that we have to work on. Okay, who is going to lead this discussion? Or should I just call out each?
Well, Mayor, if you'd like, I'll, however you want to do it.
Okay. First is the Board of Adjustment. There is one vacancy, an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023.
And you have one city applicant, Ms. Karen Livingston.
Anyone like to make an appointment?
I'm there, I'll nominate Karen Livingston.
Karen Livingston has been nominated for the Board of Adjustment. Are there further nominations? Not, the nominations are closed. Those in favor of Karen Livingston will say aye. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Simpson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hensley.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Karen Livingston has been appointed to the Board of Adjustment. Okay. Downtown Advisory is being held over Historic Preservation, three vacancies. We have, excuse me, four applicants for the three vacancies. Philip Allen, Chris Barron, Philip Ellis, and Samuel Hayes. Would anyone like to make?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Chris Barron for one of them.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Samuel Hayes.
Samuel Hayes. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Philip Allen.
Philip Allen. Okay. Philip Allen, Chris Barron, and Samuel Hayes have been nominated for the Historic Preservation Commission. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Philip Ellis.
Okay. Let me see here. So what we will do, the way this would be done, kind of in a parliamentary fashion, we will take each of the nominees in the order in which they were nominated. The, whoever has a majority will be on the council. If the first three all, each receive a majority, then those are the three. If the first, if we don't get a majority on the first three, then we will vote on number four. So you will have a chance to vote four times. Or well, three times at least for each of, once for each of the nominees. So we will start out with Chris Barron. You can vote yes or no on Chris Barron. And we will go around. Those who would wish to appoint Chris Barron to the Historic Preservation Commission will say aye. Those who are opposed will say no. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
I'm going to keep, keeping track of it here. You're, you're writing them down too? Okay, Ms. Simpson, aye or no?
Yes.
Is there aye? Okay. Ms. Hensley, yes or no?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Okay, and then they are vote aye. So Miss, Chris Barron is one of the appointees. Second person nominated was Samuel Hayes. Again, same thing, aye or nay, yes or no? For Samuel Hayes. Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
Mr. Miller. Okay. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hensley.
No.
And the mayor votes aye. So there are three in favor, two against. Samuel Hayes has been appointed. The next person nominated was Philip Allen. I think I got that correct, didn't I?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Then vote yes or no. And Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Hensley?
Yes.
Yes, and the mayor will vote yes. So we do have the, the three who all received majorities, Chris Barron, Samuel Hayes, and Philip Allen. Next, Planning Board. Two vacancies. And we have six applicants. Don Blatt, Michael Ball, Ballen or Balen, I'm not sure. Bob Johnson, Frederick Nace, Tamara Peacock, and Peter Zimring.
Madam Mayor, I'll nominate John Blatt.
Madam Mayor, I nominate Tamara Peacock.
Okay, John Blatt has been nominated. Tamara Peacock has been nominated. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Frederick Nace.
Frederick Nace has been nominated. Are there further nominations? If not, we will do it the same way. We have three nominees for two vacancies. And the first two who receive a majority vote will be on the committee. For John Blatt. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
No.
Ms. Hensley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Okay. And the mayor will vote yes, so we have the majority there. So John Blatt is reappointed. Second person nominated was Tamara Peacock. Ms. Hensley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson, yes. Miller.
Yes.
Yes. And the mayor will vote yes. We have our two people, John Blatt and Tamara Peacock, who have each received a majority vote. All right, Seventh Avenue Advisory, again, that is being put off for the moment. Free Board. We have three vacancies and four applications, Matt Brackett, Andreas Crawford, Debbie Roundtree, and Glenn Lang. Anyone like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Glenn Lang.
Glenn Lang?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Matt Brackett.
Okay. Glenn Lang and Matt Brackett have been nominated. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, uh, sorry, nominate Debbie Roundtree.
Debbie Roundtree has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, we have three nominees, Glenn Lang, Matt Brackett, and Debbie Roundtree. We can vote on all three of them since there are three spots. Okay, Mr. Smith.
Am I voting all three at one time, right? Aye.
Ms. Hensley.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
And the mayor also votes yes on that, those three. Walk of Fame Steering Committee, we have one vacancy and one applicant, Joellen Baker. Anyone like to make a nomination?
I move the city council appoint Joellen, Joellen Baker.
Okay, Joellen Baker has been nominated. Are there further nominations? If not, we have one person for one vacancy. We will go around again. Ms. Hensley, in favor, those in favor of Joellen Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
And the mayor votes aye. Or yes. Okay, Water, Sir Advisory Council, we have one vacancy and one application.
That's a tough one. Madam Mayor, I nominate Chuck McGrady.
Chuck McGrady has been nominated for Water, Sir Advisory Council. Are there further nominations? Not, those in favor of Chuck McGrady for Water, Sir will say yes, those opposed will say no. Ms. Simpson, yes. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Hensley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Okay, got that one. And French Broad River MPO TCC Committee. This is an appointment from staff. The recommendation is Matthew Manley. Anyone like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I nominate Matthew Manley.
Matthew Manley has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not, those in favor of Matthew Manley for the FBRMPOTCC. Will say yes, those opposed will say no.
Did you repeat that?
All this alphabet soup here. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
FBRMPOTCC, yes.
Ms. Hensley.
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. All right, is that it? Got them all?
Yes, ma'am. Just, just draw your attention to, we have a resignation on the Environmental Services Advisory Board of Reed Barwick. We have a vacancy, but we have no applications at this time. So we'll be accepting applications to the Environmental Services Advisory Board by city residents, so. And also, we have an opening on the Planning Board. Our current chair, longtime chair of the Planning Board, Steve Orr, has resigned. He's accepted a town manager position in Salusa. So that will be a county appointment. So we'll work with the county to, to make an appointment there, so. And you'll have some June vacancies that we'll solicit and advertise. We're always accepting applications for these important boards and we encourage our citizens and stakeholders to submit applications. Thank you.
All right. City Council comments, anyone have anything they want to bring up? If not, city manager report, anything you would like to.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
All right, then we have a closed session.
Who wants to read that thing?
Can we, can we?
Not it.
Sentence? Do we have to read the whole thing?
At least recite the numbers, A after A, with the 1, 3, 5, and 6. As shown on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that city council enter into closed session as permitted in NC General Statute 143-318. Dot 11A, 1, 3, 5, and 6 as presented on the agenda.
All right, is there any discussion? Not, those in favor of entering into closed session, Ms. Hensley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson, yes. Mayor votes aye, we will enter closed session. Okay. Motion's or any business want to go out of closed session?
No, ma'am, we do not expect to have any action.
We will be finished as far as the public is concerned.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for.
Thank you.
Listening in.